Good evening. I'd like to call the December 10th, 2025 meeting of the Open Space Porter Trustees to order to a roll call attendance show.
Here?
Brady?
Here.
And I'm here. So we have a quorum of three tonight, and apologies in advance for the fact that our cameras aren't working and we're doing this Brady Bunch thing instead. But it'll be better for the video, I guess, maybe depending on, well. The only thing I want to do before we get to the approval of the minutes is just because of the number of folks who are here, and I think for the reasons they're here, I want to propose that we swap under matters from the department, the Climate Action Update A with the City Strategic Plan 7CB and do the strategic plan item first. Dan, was that workable for staff?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Does everybody agree to that? Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda will be changed so that A and B are swapped. Next item is approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the first page of the minutes?
Not for me.
Okay. Page two. Page three.
No.
Page four.
No.
Okay, great job, Leah. Let's take a vote on approval of the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We probably could have used a motion. So a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second? Okay, Brady seconds, and Michelle has made the motion, and the vote is all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, three to nothing minutes passed. And the next item on the agenda is public comment for items not identified for public hearing. But before we do that, we're going to go over our rules of decorum. So give us a minute to do that, and then we'll jump back in.
The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and OSPT, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit this link. The city will enforce the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code. Including participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. No attendee shall disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of any city meeting in a manner that obstructs the business of the meeting. This also includes failing to obey any lawful order of the presiding officer to leave the meeting room or refrain from addressing the board. Only one person at a time at the podium unless an accommodation like an interpreter is required. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No standing in or otherwise blocking the aisles in violation of the fire code or in any way that obstructs the vision or audio of other audience members. No signs or flags shall be permitted in council chambers except for one sign held by a person measuring no more than 11 by 17 inches, which is held no higher than the person's face. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. We ask that you not affix items to the podium or dais or walls or other surfaces of the chamber. Signs, flags, or other items used to communicate must be held by one person when displayed. Obscenity, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the meeting will not be tolerated. In-person participants are asked to refrain from expressing support or disagreement verbally or with sounds such as applause, or snapping with the exception of declarations. Traditionally, support is shown through American Sign Language applause or jazz hands. If you are joining in person and would like to speak during public comment or items identified for public hearing, we have your name on the list most likely already. You can just come up here if you have not had a chance to sign up already. Oh, thank you. The second page is still on the table. Sorry about that. We have a page still on the table. If you have not had a chance to sign up already and did not sign up in advance to speak. If you're joining online, you can use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen, or click the three dots, and then you'll see a participants' selection to raise hand. And then I don't see any folks joining on their phone, so I'll go over that if we see that.
Okay. Thanks for going over that, Sam. Appreciate that. So we have no public hearing items scheduled for tonight, so all public comment will be taken now during a public comment for items not identified for public hearing. So if you're signed up, this is your chance, and you'll be called in order. As is the tradition on the board, when we have more than 20 or so people who are signed up, we're going to cut time from three minutes to two minutes. I hope that doesn't mess anybody up if you've practiced in front of the mirror with your stopwatch going. I will help you out if you need a little extra time. I understand it could be a burden. But, you know, given the topic tonight, I think if you've heard others say what you're going to say, maybe, you know, just don't say it again, and that'll help you stay under two minutes. So thanks for coming tonight. We really want to hear what you have to say, and let's open it up for public comment.
Thank you. Okay, starting tonight, we'll have Carl Ford, followed by David Buckner, and then Linda Andis George. We have Carl Ford joining online. Carl, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start. Thank you. Thanks to the board members. Appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to speak about the 7C multimodal assessment. I'm a trip leader hiker for several organizations, and I've probably hiked 1,000 miles on OSMP lands over the years. I come for the world-class hiking and the scenery. So I'm concerned about, actually, my wife and I both are concerned about hiker-biker conflict on these trails, especially with athletes training and going fast. Our past experience with mountain bikers sometimes shows aggressive riding, not yielding near collisions, and even actual collisions with injury. Whiter trails, more use will create more problems. We also feel like there'd be a loss of solitude and peace and impacts to wildlife with fast-moving bicycles. So I'm really talking about if bicycles are permitted on these trails. Weeds are already a problem, and heavier use by mountain bikes will exacerbate the problem. And if the trails get larger like they normally do with mountain bikers, they would fragment habitat. A couple of quick things on the significance of these lands. The Colorado Natural Heritage Program is rated South Boulder, and the Shanahan Grasslands is very high biodiversity significance, and they have rare plants and butterflies. Also, these areas are designated as Colorado Tallgrass Prairie Natural Areas, where their high-quality natural features have statewide significance and emphasizing exemplary management to conserve that feature. So in summary, we'd like to see these areas protected for hiker only. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have David Buckner, followed by Linda Andis George and Andrew Feeney. I see David is joining online. Oh, I did see David. Oh, here we go. David, you should be able to unmute yourself now. And David, I see you've unmuted yourself. If you can say something, we can check to see if we can hear you. And David, maybe one more time if you could try. I see you've unmuted yourself. Okay, David, we may come back to you. I'm just going to, we'll come back to you next.
Hey, Sam. Maybe also suggest he could call in?
Yeah, thank you. And if you need to, also, David, you can call in, and when I see you that you've called in, we can also make sure that we come back to you. Okay. Next, we have Linda Andis George, who we have joining in person. So Linda, if you can come up to the podium.
Adjusting for being short, can you hear me okay? You know me already, Linda Andis George. I was a member of your board from '94 until 2001. I know how much hard work it is. I'm a triathlete, and I maintained that until the past decade, and I'm an inveterate hiker and a birdwatcher. I'd like to comment on this 7C issue. I think it has suddenly ballooned into a push by the BMA lobbyists and parents who are members of the biking community concerned about their youngsters. These folks are trying to revive an old wish list from the mountain bike community. The notion sparked by one item on the city multimodal plan is that to get folks out of their polluting and dangerous cars, all we have to do is convert open space trails to multimodal, beginning first with too-long and currently rather pristine nature trails, some that I like. This is a false trade-off. This will become apparent to you over the coming months of community discussion. My field trip's on my Yeti bike down to see what it's all about. I looked at the Marshall-Mesa Highway 170 area. It was a 12-minute trip. It will be, I think, much more safe for young bikers and for all the rest of us, including old ones, once those safety measures on 170 are in place. Again, see my letter for details. In short, I urge you to let the strategic plan process unfold as it will, and let the community get ready for the specifics. You are, after all, the protectors of open space and its natural values. Thanks.
Next, we have Andrew Feeney, followed by David Snowberg, and then Eleanor Hadby. And Andrew, you can come up to the podium.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Three months ago, I shared my concerns with you all about safe access to Doughty Draw from South Boulder, and I'm here to follow up because I think that we're putting our community members and our young high school mountain bikers at risk. All we're asking for is safer access to South Boulder Trails. Currently, we have to ride on the road, cross a busy intersection, especially after-school rush hour time. It's pretty dangerous crossing the road just to get to the Marshall Mesa trailhead. There are already trails in this area that exist. Some of them are double-track roads that follow a barbed wire fence. What we would like to see is opening them up to bikes, at least one of them, so we could have a safe route to get to South Boulder Trails without having to go on the road. This would benefit the high school mountain bike team, but also the greater community. With a simple policy decision, the board can prevent accidents, reduce car dependency, and provide responsible, sustainable access for all users. Fundamentally, it's a safety issue. Our teenagers are doing everything right, yet still being placed at unnecessary risk because there's no legitimate off-street option to reach the trail closest to their home and school. And the same risk affects countless other Boulder residents who would gladly ride instead of drive if a safe route existed. I'm urging the board to take action now. I feel like the need is immediate, the solution is practical, and the potential to prevent harm is significant. And I'm asking that you please prioritize the well-being of our youth and the safety of the greater Boulder community by opening an existing connection to provide safe bike access to Doughty Draw. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have David Snowberg, followed by Eleanor Hadby, and then Wendy Sweet. And David.
Hello. Thank you. I'm David Snowberg. I'm a Boulder resident, homeowner living in South Boulder on Greenbrier Boulevard. I'm an avid hiker and mountain biker. CU Boulder graduate, two times, 20 years apart, father of an athlete on the Fairview Mountain Bike Team. I strongly support a mountain bike trail connector between Shanahan Ridge and Doughty Draw for three reasons: safety, sustainability, and community benefit. First, safety. As Andrew mentioned, it's dangerous to ride the roads to the Doughty Draw Trail System. There's highways, crossings, minimal shoulders. My number-one concern for cyclists in Boulder is accidents with motor vehicles. Through my life, I've been hit three times by motor vehicles on a bicycle. I'm lucky, and others have not been so lucky. Many of us know people who aren't alive today because of being hit by a car. Mountain bike trail access from Shanahan Ridge to Doughty Draw would lower the risks to cyclists in Boulder. It would be a safety improvement to high school athletes and could prevent a future fatality. Two, sustainability improvement for Boulder. This will promote bicycling over driving. It's impossible to be driving when you are riding a bicycle. You'll have less people driving and parking at trailheads, lower congestion, reduce carbon emissions in Boulder, and support our climate goals. And third, community benefit. Convenient trail access for South Boulder residents would be something that we would like to see. It would improve the quality of life for Boulder residents. I and others would benefit from this trail. So I don't believe mountain bike trails should be allowed in all open space areas, but in this particular area, I think it would be wise to do so, and for the reasons of safety, sustainability, and community benefit. Thank you.
Next, we have Eleanor Hadby, followed by Wendy Sweet, and then Steve Sloan.
Hello. Hello, Eleanor Hadby, Boulder 82304. I'm speaking to strongly support creating the Bike Accessible Connector Trail in South Boulder. Fairview High School sits at one end of that trail. It's full of teenagers, the next generation, and the demographic we often worry about: too much time on their phones, disconnection from people and nature. These worries are real, but they're not the whole story. Communities like the Fairview Mountain Bike Team tackle these concerns head-on. At practices, hands are on handlebars, eyes are on the trail. They are not on their phones. Riders at all levels, from beginner to expert, form deep friendships as they train, race, and cheer for each other together. They connect to teachers, coaches, and mentors. They connect to their pit crew parents. They connect to their community as they put in hundreds of hours of required volunteer trail work on our open space. They hear birds, feel the breeze, and the change in season on every ride. This program helps develop around 150 kids every year who are deeply connected to their community and the world around them. But a mountain bike team does not exist without safe access to trails. Remember, these are kids. They don't have cars, and so training rides never start from a trailhead. They start after school from the school parking lot. From Fairview, it's three to seven miles on a road just to get to a trailhead. 30 minutes there, 30 minutes back, when you are utterly dependent on drivers staying distraction-free just to stay alive. Next time you pull up to the traffic lights, look in the cars on either side of you. Are those drivers distraction-free? I doubt it. We're currently forcing our kids to choose between riding a bike and staying safe. And as a parent of a kid who is hit by a distracted driver while riding to school, it's a choice I'm painfully aware of. It's a choice that no more Boulder kids should be forced to make. They deserve better. They deserve safe bike routes for both commuting and recreation. This connector trail would allow Fairview riders to access the South Boulder Trails by rolling the dice for just a few hundred yards on the road rather than 10 miles. It would allow our city's kids to build healthy connections and community while staying safe. And so I'm asking that open space staff prioritize the approval and design of this connector trail. Thank you.
Next, we have Wendy Sweet, followed by Steve Sloan, and then Tom Needy.
Hi, Wendy Sweet. I'm the Executive Director of the Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance. This is the third time this year that I have provided public comments on 7C. At the September OSPT meeting, community members spoke directly to the need of a South Boulder to Shanahan Ridge and Doughty Draw connection, and OSPT responded that it should be treated as a priority in the 7C process. Given that direction, it is disappointing to see no mention of the specific connector in the staff update for tonight. I want to be clear, BMA is not pushing for a specific trail alignment or predetermined outcome. We are asking OSMP to do the work needed to evaluate whether a bike connection in Southwest Boulder is appropriate, feasible, and consistent with city goals around safety, multimodal access, and emissions. This evaluation should begin now, not years from now. There is also a practical opportunity in front of us. OSMP already plans to reroute the Lower Big Blue Stem Trail in 2026. That project offers a natural and cost-effective starting point to study what a safe off-road connection might look like. We also know how long OSMP projects take. The North Sky Trail took eight years from approval to opening. If a South Boulder connection is going to be meaningful for the current generation of riders, including our youth riders who are most vulnerable on the roads, then the evaluation phase cannot be pushed further into the distance. The community has identified this gap. OSPT has identified this gap. Staff has acknowledged that Doughty Draw has one of the highest rates of visitors arriving by car. This is precisely the kind of connection the 7C initiative is meant to address. BMA is not suggesting that we fast-track anything or skip process or community engagement. We are asking for the process to start now. We are asking for the South Boulder connection to be clearly identified, evaluated, and advanced in the early stages of the 7C work plan, rather than being lost in a year-long, system-wide analysis. This is a known need. It is a stated priority. Now it requires action. Thank you.
Next, we have Steve Sloan, followed by Tom Needy, and then Stephen Lomelle.
Hello. My name is Steve Sloan. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm talking to you tonight from three different... Okay, thanks. Do I get a restart? Appreciate that. Sorry, I'm not very good with mics. I'm talking to you tonight coming from three different perspectives: one as a cyclist myself and a bike commuter, second as a father, and third as a coach. I see personally, a little bit selfish, that mountain biking is gaining in popularity, and my opinion is this should be reflected in the management of public lands. Mountain bikers are a community, and we do contribute hundreds of hours of trail maintenance every year. As a bike commuter, I used to commute to Longmont. I lost a colleague at my previous employer, and that could have been me. He was killed on the diagonal riding his bike by a car. So reflecting on my own mortality, that brings me to the second point, that I'm a father of kids who ride their mountain bikes. I'm thankful I've had the opportunity to raise my kids here in Boulder. I'm also thankful that we've been able to raise them on bikes. Builds grit, and exercise is obviously important to young kids. It's not easy or safe always to get kids to the mountain bike trails due to gaps in our bike paths and trails infrastructure. Piling them into the car and driving is less than ideal from an environmental standpoint, and also finding parking. And the third option is taking risks riding on the road, which I've already commented on. As a coach, these kids in the mountain bike program are amazing. They contribute 400 hours of trail work, which was over 25% of the league, even though that's a, we represent less than that as a fraction of their student population. The league itself advocates for trail stewardship, and we unfortunately have to risk our lives as coaches, as students, riding alongside Marshall or Canyon. So in closing, a big part of my job as a coach is to keep these young kids safe, and I would appreciate your help in keeping them safe by advocating for this and future connector trails. Thank you very much.
Next is Tom Needy, followed by Stephen Lomelle and Pete Weber. And Tom, if you're joining online, if you could just put in the Q and A really quickly, if you are joining... Or raise your hand. Oh, there we go. I see. Okay, so Tom, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, first off, thanks for all you all do. Thanks for the board and your work. Very much appreciative. Speaking about the connector trail, part of the 7C, which people have been talking about. Been a Boulder resident for 25-plus years. I'm a husband, father, hiker, walker, manager, coach. This connector trail, to me, just speaks safety all around. I mean, this would allow less cars, less congestion, more participation, smile, and again, most of all, safety. So I think, you know, from what you're hearing now and from what I have to say, this is just a slam dunk, an easy win for everyone, and hopefully you'll hear our concerns tonight. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Stephen Lomelle, then Pete Weber, and then Richard Harris.
Good evening. Thanks a lot for the opportunity to offer thoughts on 7C and a multimodal connection from South Boulder to the Doughty Draw trailhead. My name's Steve Lomelle. I've been a Boulder resident since 1998. I live in South Boulder on Hillsdale off of Table Mesa. I have two kids. They're in fourth and fifth grade. And so I'm strongly advocating for access via trail to get out to Doughty Draw, because like some other competitive athletes here, I can make it out there in 12 minutes. But with my kids being nine and 11, they've got much smaller legs, not quite as much endurance. If we try to ride to that trailhead, it takes us a long time. And so every time that we have been out there, we have relied on a car to get us to the trailhead. So I think from a sustainability perspective, it would be really wonderful to be able to access trail from South Boulder without having to get the kids in the car, put the bikes on the roof, and drive out that way. Obviously, from a safety standpoint, I have concerns riding with small children on a busy road. They're smaller than high schoolers. They're tough to see in a car, and it concerns me. I spend a lot of time stressing out as we travel out that way, worrying about cars and worrying about their safety. And having trail access from South Boulder would alleviate a lot of that concern, and I think reduce risk for my kids. So thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Next, Pete Weber, then Richard Harris, followed by Omar Chirawi.
Good evening. My name is Pete Weber. I'm the Executive Director of Boulder Junior Cycling. We're a youth-based nonprofit organization here in Boulder. This is our 19th year in existence, and I'm speaking on behalf of our 400 youth members under the age of 18. If you add their siblings and parents, there are over 2,000 members of Boulder Junior Cycling. And I'm here in support of the same concept, this idea of a trail connection to the South Boulder Trail System, Doughty Draw, Marshall Mesa, et cetera. We have youth cycling programs that operate year-round, and our biggest age group is middle school. This type of connection would be a real boon to our youth members, providing a safe and convenient way to be on dirt and to get access to that wonderful trail system south of town without the need of a car. Most of our kids are not biking to Doughty Draw or Marshall Mesa. They're going in a car. And we can avoid these car trips. Once they get into the high school age, they start to access the trails on bike, but as we've heard before, it's not as safe as an all-dirt connection. I support everything that people in front of me have mentioned, and we're here to participate in a careful and appropriate process to determine if this is the right move. But to me, it makes a lot of common sense, and Boulder Junior Cycling is in full support. Thank you.
Next is Richard Harris, then Omar Chirawi, and then Bev Baker.
Hi. My name is Dick Harris, speaking for Plano Boulder County. We've been extensively involved in the creation, funding, and planning for our open space system since its inception 58 years ago. The 7C planning process is intended to assess multimodal improvements. The citywide strategic plan says it is to invest in and maintain a transportation system with an array of multimodal choices, et cetera. We ask you to keep two basic concepts foremost as you pursue this planning effort. First, Plano Boulder members know the amazing natural resources in this system, and we are surprised that they are not called out in the initial staff report. and we are surprised that they are not called out in the initial staff report. The unique national, natural resources in our designated state natural areas, that is, state of Colorado, and habitat conservation areas must not be included in this assessment. Their exclusion will ensure that the continued carbon sequestration occurs naturally in our native grasslands, an important element of the city's climate action plan. And two, the preservation of the incredible biodiversity that still sustains itself in our unique designated areas. And second, with 85% of open space visitors frequently participating in hiking, walking, maintaining trails designated for walking, hiking, without bike use must be a high priority. Already, our system has more miles of trails on which bikes are allowed than trails where bikes are not allowed. We must sustain trails that allow for enjoyable pedestrian use that are free from conflicts with bike, bikes. Thanks for this opportunity to comment on the staff's initial plans. Thank you.
Next is Omar Charawi, then Bev Baker, and then Lynn Segal. And... Omar, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello, can you hear me online?
Yes.
Um, great. Yeah, you'll never guess what I'm going to talk about. It's the Doughty Draw Connector Trail. Um, but anyway, yes, hi. Hi, my name is Omar Charawi. Uh, I live in Shanahan Ridge with my girlfriend and our dog Nori, where we own a condo. Uh, my partner and I share a vehicle, and we regularly commute by bike to work, me to Lewisville via as many dirt trails as I can, and my girlfriend to CU Boulder via bike pass. Uh, we both appreciate our safer options for commuting and obviously love biking. Um, I'm not just a cyclist. I'm also a hiker, climber, and a seeker of solitude and peace like many in Boulder. Um, but I am speaking to advocate for a mountain bike connector trail from Greenbrier to Doughty Draw. Uh, an additional connector trail offers a safer way to access mountain bike trails in South Boulder for our competitive youth, while still absolutely preserving hiking opportunities and these abilities to seek solitude and everything. Um, the vast majority of the trails here are, in fact, hiker-only, not bike if you don't include bike paths, which are obviously for commuting. Um, and biking has grown significantly in the last few decades, and I think OSMP policy and planning needs to grow with that trend as OSMP land is meant to be enjoyed by all sorts of recreationalists. Uh, there's obviously overwhelming support for this, and I think Tom said it best when he said it's just an absolute slam dunk and sort of a no-brainer. Um, we, we really need this and would appreciate this. Uh, so thank you. Yeah, I'd love a Greenbrier-Doughty Draw Connector Trail.
Next is, uh, Bev Baker, followed by Lynn Segal, and then Ruben Picard.
Good evening, trustees. I'm Bev Baker, speaking on behalf of Boulder County Audubon Society. I hope you've had a chance to read our written comments. I'll share some highlights. Our mission is to be a voice for birds and wildlife conservation through habitat protection, advocacy, and nature education. We consider it of the utmost importance to prioritize protection, restoration, and enhancement of wildlife and ecosystems in managing OSMP lands. These priorities are consistent with the results of the 2019 OSMP Master Plan Survey, where 74% of respondents rated ecosystem stewardship and health as absolutely essential. Another 20% rated it as very important, and 79% felt that ecosystem health and resilience should be one of the most important themes for guiding OSMP management in the future. As long as the full range of ecological impacts are carefully considered and addressed, we support the city's strategic goals, strategic plan goals of reducing vehicle miles and greenhouse gas emissions. We don't believe it's appropriate to move forward with smaller, specific proposals ahead of OSMP's planned multimodal project and timeline. According to the 2019 survey, as was mentioned earlier, the majority of OSMP visitors are on foot, 85% hike or walk. This includes many of our members, many of whom are older adults who visit open space for quiet activities such as hiking and observing nature, including bird watching. In areas with heavy bike use, including the North Sky Trail and Marshall Mesa area, pedestrian visitors have already been displaced from OSMP trails due to unpleasant experiences and fear for their safety. As this multimodal project moves forward, we urge you to prioritize wildlife and ecosystems and to include safety of pedestrian visitors as an important component of safety concerns. Any new trail projects should include full review of impacts to wildlife, native plants, and ecosystems, as well as full public review and participation. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Next, we have Lynn Segal, then Ruben Picard, and then Edward Youngs. And Lynn Segal, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Lynn Segal, I urge OSBT to consider managing population. Every single person that spoke tonight spoke based on the impacts of too many people in this area. You know, you have a huge deficit for maintenance and operations, for purchase, and we're building Sundance with 2,500-person performing arts center, 149, uh, hotel rooms, and 500 housing units, and Dark Horse with 400 and something. And now they've got six bedrooms per apartment. So you have to multiply that by many factors. Um, this is just beyond carrying capacity of this community. It's everywhere, going up, up, up. At the Boulder Dinner Theater, you know, they argued for an hour over 10 feet versus 12 feet ceilings because the developer would lose six units if they have 12-foot ceilings, which might allow more working space for fans or welding things that make or space that, that, you know, probably won't even get used anyway. Uh, trying new things instead of commercial, which doesn't work. All these commercial spaces are not being rented. And it, it's just outrageous. What's, and Harmon knows all about it because he came from planning board. Um, and that's where you need to put your energies on, is managing the development here, stopping the subsidies, and letting this area flourish a little bit more without the demands of this intense population passion. It's just counterintuitive. Done.
Next, we have Ruben Picard, followed by Edward Youngs and Malik Shah. Uh, and... Ruben, if you are joining online, uh, if you could just either raise your hand or put a message into the Q and A. Okay, we'll come back to Ruben. Uh, next is Edward Youngs, followed by Malik Shah.
Good evening. My name is Edward Youngs. I'm going to speak about 7C just like everybody else. Um, thinking about the proposals to increase the use of bikes on the, on the trails that are not currently using them, I have basically two perspectives. My first perspective is that of appreciation for the way things are today. Um, this has taken a lot of work, and I've been enjoying this for the past 30 years. I've been a volunteer naturalist for the past 10 years. It's taken, I know it's taken a lot of work by this, this body and the predecessor, and your predecessors. My hope that springs eternal is that this perspective and enjoyment will be available to my children and their children and their children. My second perspective is that of an engineer who spent, uh, more than 40 years, um, improving and developing the usability of public-facing telecoms equipment. This perspective leads me to observe that our current tools for navigating the existing bike trails, as well as the in-town trails, it, there's actually two different systems, and they are, uh, the tools that we have for navigating them are basically separate and distinct. I think we could improve both the usability of our natural trails, as well as our city trails, if we combined and think of these as a single network system. Decisions would also be easier for both stakeholders and decision-makers if we had some tools that pulled these together into a single, uh, system. And that would help us not only negotiate conflicting goals, but also to, um, come up with better, uh, better compromises. Thank you.
Next is Malik Shah, followed by Eric Deck, and then Karen Holweg. Malik, if you're joining online, if you could just raise your hand or put a message into the Q and A. Okay, we'll come back. Um, next is Eric Deck, followed by Karen Holweg.
All right, so thank you to the Open Space Board and Trustees for letting me speak tonight. My name is Eric Deck. I've lived in South Boulder for a little bit over 25 years. Um, I regularly take advantage of all the trails, biking, hiking. Um, so thank you for having all those trails. Um, I'm strong in favor of this, uh, mountain bike connector from Greenbrier to Doughty Draw. I think it's great to add trails that connect existing trails and give people the opportunity to get to trailheads without driving. Um, I also think there's a huge benefit for safety, um, especially for like the Fairview Mountain Bike Team and the kids there. Um, you know, they don't have to ride on the, the 93 Frontage Road. They don't have to go through the, um, intersection on Marshall Road and around, uh, Marshall Road and 93. And, um, it's just, it'd be another great trail asset, um, in the, you know, the, the set of trails that the open space and mountain parks has. Um, and it, it may also reduce parking issues, right? You could potentially have less cars at Marshall Mesa, less cars at Doughty Draw, less cars at South Mesa Trailhead. So again, just to close strongly in favor of, um, adding the connector trail and allowing mountain bikes on it. Thank you.
Next is Karen Holweg, followed by Aaron Girrotis and Darren Watkins.
Hi, I'm Karen Holweg, and I come before you as one of the very few, or perhaps the only, member of the West TSA Community Collaborative Group here tonight. I'm here, pardon me, I'm here to comment on and make some suggestions for improving staff's scope, methodology, and schedule for the multimodal improvement assessment. As staff has pointed out in the memo, understanding current conditions is an essential first step in this and in any planning process. My biggest concern is that some of the counts required to assess levels of use need to be done in warm months, not in quarter one. After all, January, February, and March are the coldest and historically snowiest months we have. The reason these counts are important is that before adding a new user group to a trail or to a street, it's important to understand current levels of use as we learned in the West TSA planning process. As several have already pointed out, it's not safe to add bike use to a road with, say, 50 vehicles per minute zipping by, never mind a state highway with vehicles traveling at 50 to 60 miles an hour. Similarly, it's not safe to add bikes traveling 15 or more miles per hour to a trail with 30 or so hikers, runners, dog walkers per minute who are already using the trail. So, once potential focus areas have been selected for the multimodal access assessment, it's essential to count users on trails being considered for multimodal use during peak use on sunny, warm days, not in quarter one, but in quarters two and three. I realize this will require a significant revision in the proposed timeline, but for staff's recommendation to be functional, such data is necessary. Thank you.
Next, we have Aaron Girrotis, then Darren Watkins, and Keith Jimmerson. Aaron, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, my name is Aaron Girrotis. Uh, I am currently a board member for Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance. Um, I'm here to voice my support for the connector from Shanahan Ridge to Doughty Draw. I, myself, don't live directly in that area, like a lot of, a lot of other people have spoken, but I visit the area fairly frequently. Um, and I'm familiar with the intersection at 93 and 170, where, you know, bikers currently have to ride through to, to get into the trails. I'm also very familiar with the Doughty Draw Trailhead, with the existing crosswalk, and much lower traffic, um, much easier space to cross 170 to access the trail systems. Um... Sorry. Uh, I also want to just kind of look at a larger picture of the whole Marshall Mesa, um, Doughty Draw Trail System, and point out that there's very easy trail path access from the east side through the Rock Creek Trail and the Coal Creek Trail. There is no such easy access for all the residents of South Boulder to get to the same trail system. And I think that this is an opportunity to provide that same type of access that the folks who live on the east side of the, of the trail system have. I think the proposed and already planned reroute of the Lower Big Blue Stem Trail is a great opportunity to look at and add bike access along with that project. Um, and that still leaves a large network of trails to the west of that that would still be hiker-only and still, and, you know, without any interference or between bikes and hikers for most of the trail system there. Uh, thank you.
Next is Darren Watkins, followed by Keith Jimmerson, and then Hazel Gordon. Darren, if you're joining online, if you could either raise your hand or just put a note into the Q and A. Okay. Uh, Darren, we'll come back to you. Next is Keith Jimmerson, then Hazel Gordon.
My name is Keith Jimmerson, and I live in, um, I've lived in, I live in South Boulder and have since 1977. And, um, first of all, thank you, folks, for all of your work on OSMP. Um, it's a huge responsibility, and I appreciate that. Uh, and allowing a bike trail in the West TSA is, is a very big decision. Um, a connector with Shanahan Ridge to Doughty Draw already exists. Uh, Shanahan Ridge, uh, you take the underpass at the end of, at the, at Albion, so you cross under 93, and then you take the Marshall Road to the Marshall Mesa Trailhead to Community Ditch, and go the, under the underpass there, and you can get to Doughty Draw. This issue of a, uh, new connector trail was settled years ago uh, when the OSMP Board and the City Council voted for very good reasons against a connector trail from Shanahan Ridge through, uh, Doubt, to, through Doughty Draw and the West TSA. The Community Collaborative Group was formed of hikers, bikers, runners, birders, neighborhoods, ecologists. They were all included in the decision-making process, and I'm hoping that will continue to be the case. Some of the groups against a, this connector trail are the Sierra Club, Audubon Society, Neighborhoods, Environmentalists, and the organization Save Open Space. And I'm hoping that these groups will be included in the future decision-making process. Uh, to make a decision without these groups would not be, um, would not be prudent. Uh, there is already a connector trail. We don't need two. And I'm asking you to honor all of the past evaluations and decisions and, um, not allow this connector trail to go through. Thanks. Thanks.
Next is Hazel Gordon, and then Malik Shaw. I see that you're online now, so we'll come back to you. So Hazel Gordon.
My name is Hazel Gordon, and I've been a user of the open space trails for almost two decades, on and off. I've been rejuvenated and delighted by the sights, the smells, and the sounds I hear on the trails of flowers, mammals, snakes, birds, and flying insects on or near the trail. I urge you to consider the protection of our native species and their intact, supposedly right now, intact habitats as the highest part, as one of the higher priorities in your management goals. The trail proposals by some bicyclists are made to enhance their riding experiences. As you are seeing in the Boulder Valley Ranch area, the plans include accommodating riders of various skills by rerouting some of the trails, widening the trails, and disturbing soils, rocks, and plants in the process. This fragments some of the, and it destroys the lives of some of the unseen and voiceless members of the community, including the ground nesting bees, beetles, spiders, and other insect creatures that are often impacted by these, and especially slow-moving caterpillars, which I've seen on the trails a lot, which are impacted by bicycles and these disruptions. You've heard about the Shanahan grasslands, so I won't stress the importance of that area, but I do want to say that the grassland habitat has diminishing populations of owls, of burrowing owls and loch buntings. So that's another consideration. So in a sense, I'd like you to consider managing the city's open space lands as environmental stewards for further generations of species, whether they're human or otherwise. Thank you.
Next is Malik Shaw, followed by Anna Niede, and then Mike Barrow. Malik, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello. Does everyone hear me? Okay.
Yes.
I was going to speak on, I was actually a member of the Fairview Mountain Biking Team, and the safety on the roads is actually quite an issue for the high school teams. When I was on the team, actually, one of my teammates in the varsity group, we were riding along one of the roads that this would, this project would actually, would like replace it as a path for the athletes. One, my friend Graham McCarthy, he actually was hit by a Tesla, and that's not really like an uncommon thing that happens. That was a specific event that stood out, but there's often issues with like crossing roads that's dangerous, especially with big groups. But even just riding along in roads that have bike lanes, especially if they're two-way traffic without a median, there's not really space for cars to get over to the side. And especially in kind of like high travel areas, a bike path makes a lot more sense or a bike trail makes a lot more sense. And this is something that we've instituted across the Boulder area, and it makes such a difference. I actually am able to ride on trails from my house to the school, for example, and that's so much safer than riding along the roads where I have to make sure that I have proper lights on. And even so, even just crossing intersections, people all the time make rights. I've had to avoid them. I've actually been hit myself at a lower speed, but it's something that I'm pretty sure all bikers can tell you about. And I think especially with high school students, it's such a valuable program, being able to get out and ride and take advantage of what our open space has to offer and to be able to make it accessible by being able to get to these places by using trails rather than having to go on the road and risk that. Thank you.
Next, we have Anna Niede, then Mike Barrow, and then Ben Buck.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. My name's Anna Niede. I'm a junior at Fairview High School in South Boulder. I'm one of the captains on the Fairview Mountain Bike Team, and I'm here to strongly support a bike-accessible trail from Shanahan Ridge to Doughty Draw. This past fall was my third season on the mountain bike team, and it's one of the most welcoming, fun, inclusive groups I've been a part of at Fairview. It not only develops some incredible athletes, but at the same time introduces completely new riders to the joy, fitness, and community that biking and the outdoors can provide. But the biggest concern for our coaches every year is road safety when riding from Fairview to the trails and then back to school. As someone who was hit, seriously injured, and lucky to walk away with my life while riding to school by a distracted driver, I'm constantly aware of the risks of being on the road, even when you're doing everything right. Currently, we start almost every ride down Marshall Road, and when going to the Doughty Draw Trailhead, we also have to cross the huge intersection at Marshall and 93, and then ride down Eldo Canyon Road, which has almost no shoulder. It's one of the most stressful rides to a trailhead for riders and coaches alike. An MTB-accessible trail connecting Shanahan Ridge to Doughty Draw would not only be a more enjoyable way to access the trailhead, but would cut our five miles on road to a half mile, making the ride significantly safer. Additionally, this trailhead would be a much more direct route to Fairview than to the Doughty Draw Trailhead. The current road route takes at least 20 minutes, even for our faster groups. For the newer riders at Fairview, they just don't ride Doughty Draw because it takes too long to get there and get back. Even though this trailhead is not as much on Boulder High's doorstep as much as it is for us, we regularly see their team riding the trails as well, and this trail would have the same benefit for their team as it does for ours, bringing the total number of high school athletes this benefits to well over 200. Making the Shanahan Ridge to Doughty Draw Connector Trail accessible not only keeps mountain bikers safe while accessing this great trail system, I'm asking that approval for this vital bike connector trailhead is prioritized by Open Space Mountain Parks, not only as a recreation issue, but a safety necessity. Thank you.
Next is Mike Barrow, then Ben Buck, and then Miles Shebzen. And Mike, we received your pictures, apologies that we're not able to get in a format to share, but we have it in the public record so that the public can view it and also our OSPT members.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Mike Barrow, I want to thank you folks for your service because I watched the September OSPT meeting, and I watched it multiple times because I have never seen a board more forcefully instruct staff to include something. And I was cheering, literally. So, 7C is an assessment process, is it not? It comes up with actionable stuff. So I don't think it's appropriate for staff to take off the table something that a large percentage of the population wants to have. Now, whether or not it actually happens, that's another thing. Now, the other thing I wanted to talk to you today about is chunder. That's a trail speak for rocks all over the trail. Flat Irons Vista is a really good example of the trail spitting up rocks in such a way that it just turns into a grinding situation. The trail widens out. I've seen a device, a rock crusher device, that only is 35 inches wide, so it's trail-worthy, and it can come and grind the rocks. Dan, I'm talking to you. I've shared this with Bo Clark, but it's a SEPI-M rock grinding machine, and it works wonders. I've seen it at work in Northwest Arkansas, and the tread it lays down afterwards is incredible. I had some additional materials that you'll have access to, and there's a YouTube, one-minute YouTube video that you should take a look at and see how it grinds up to six-inch-sized rocks into a tread that can be tamped down and made really, really nice. Thank you.
Next is Ben Buck, and then Miles Shebzen.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ben Buck. I live on El Dorado Springs Drive, less than half a mile from the Doughty Draw Trailhead. This is where I walk my dog every morning. I am a cyclist, but I use these trails as a pedestrian much more often than I do as a cyclist. So I wanted to come up here and speak today to add my voice saying yes in my backyard. Others have eloquently described many of the benefits of such a trail connector, and I want to say that I do support developing a connector, not only to increase the available trails to ride, but also as a way to access the Doughty Draw and South Mesa Trailhead without a car, which will reduce the number of cars parked on the side of El Dorado Springs Drive on popular days. I know that's a concern of both myself and my neighbors. So, yes, I would love to see this trail built, and I thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have Miles Shebzen.
Hi, I'm Miles Dozer. I ride for the Fairview High School Mountain Bike Team, and it's a great community. I love what like we have, and I think it's super important that we have a trail that lets us get to bike trails fast and safely because when we're riding along the roads to get there, like we're in a group of 20 kids and taking up the whole road, and then if there's a car or something, and we're all trying to get over, and it's kind of chaos. So I think if we have a trail that will let us get there and not have to deal with the roads, and, I mean, myself, when I'm riding with my friends, sometimes they aren't paying as much attention as I, and I'll see a car, and I'm like, everyone get over, and it's like, we're all trying to get over the side, and we just aren't able to, and the car ends up waiting. So I think if we have, like somewhere where we aren't worried about cars coming, we're not always like distracted from our biking, and we don't have to worry, I think that'd be a lot better, and we could have this amazing trail system that would let us get straight from Fairview to the trails, and thank you.
Next, I'm just going to read a few speakers who signed up, but we have not seen join online yet or in person. So if I say your name, if you could either raise your hand if you're joining online or just put a note into the Q and A, David Buckner, Ruben Picar, and Darren Watkins. Okay. And I'm not seeing any notes or hands from there. If you're joining online and would like to speak and have not done so already, please raise your hand. Oh, I'm sorry about that. I do see that Ruben Picar is joining now, so, Ruben, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, how's it going? Do you hear me? Yeah. And so my name is Ruben. I was in Fairview. I'm now a freshman at CU. I'm a national-level mountain biker in Ireland, and I think this plan is not only amazing, but necessary. I think that frontage road that the students have to take to get to Marshall is seriously an unnecessary hazard. So cars move really fast, and there's no protected space for non-motorized users. As someone who is deeply involved in the sport, and I can honestly tell you, roads like this are not just inconvenient, but seriously dangerous. And Malik mentioned, a personal friend of ours was hit by a car on this exact stretch of road, and he's lucky to be alive. But I think this trail would remove, I mean, this trail would remove that risk entirely. I mean, when the concerns about wildlife come up, I do want to address them, because I do think the safety of the students and the bikers around South Boulder take much higher priority than those of wildlife habit, like caterpillars. I think with the right planning, I think this can be a fantastic and necessary addition to South Boulder. So, yeah, thank you.
If you're joining online and would like to speak, you can go ahead and raise your I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. Well, thank you, Sam. With that, I'm going to close public comment, and I just want to say, from the kids from Fairview and the coaches and the parents, to our environmental stewards and members of the community and advocates, really, really proud of the turnout tonight and really happy to hear everybody's point of view and grateful for all of your participation. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is matters from the board, starting with trustee questions or discussion on written information memos or public comment, of which we had two. We had an OSMP Prairie Dog Management 2025 and the retreat summary from our recent retreat in October. Does anyone have any comments regarding or questions, thoughts regarding the Prairie Dog Management memo in our packet?
I think I'll discuss that when we talk about the next item.
Okay. And any comments about the retreat summary? Thanks, staff, for putting that together. Not only was it a great retreat, but it's nice to have a record of it, and I think it helped us in figuring out our priorities for this year and recollecting what our priorities are for, and it helped us in focusing our energies in drafting the letter to City Council that we're going to discuss right now. So, yeah, if you would like. Sorry. So one of the things that we do in matters from the board is we can talk about public comment, and I went right over that. Go ahead, Michelle.
That's okay. I just want to thank all the folks who showed up tonight, either via Zoom or in person. Think that we had 26 people, 26 speakers tonight, 28 signed up, but two didn't get a chance to speak. And I'm taking a tally. And I know some, a lot of these kids are supposed to be home studying for finals, so. But I really appreciate you all coming out and really expressing why this is important to you from all sides. Appreciate you coming out. Also, just wanted to point out, we're going to talk about this topic a couple of different times tonight because we are about to launch into the council letter, which lists this as a priority, this topic as a priority. And then we also have an agenda item with the staff making a presentation to talk about this as exactly as you as well. So I know you got to study, but if you do have to go home, you can watch the video later. And I'm saying that as a parent, so. Okay.
Yeah, and just to add something to that, given your presence here tonight, we moved the 7C discussion up one so that if you did want to stay for it, you wouldn't have to wait as long.
I also want to thank everybody. This is, I think, the biggest turnout in terms of public comment I've had so far in my tenure on OSPT, and so this is not the most engaging, exciting way to spend your evening, and so I thank you for coming. And I just want to make an observation that, well, one, I want to make a statement that I take your concern seriously. On, I mean, there's, I think a lot of the people who commented would fall on one side of this 7C issue, specifically the connector trail, and another, and several of them are sort of in the middle. And I also would observe that there's, seems to be a generational divide in terms of the who at least showed up to speak on this. And I think those who want to enjoy nature peacefully have, it's important that you have a place to do that in the system, and I agree with that. And I'm also very compelled by the safety concerns that some of you who showed up, unfortunately, it's a personal issue for you. So anyway, I know we're going to talk about it more, but sometimes it might feel like you're just kind of speaking to the But, but sometimes I, it, it might feel like you're just kind of speaking to the, to a wall and wonder if we're actually listening. I'm here to say we are. And I, I, I think we all take our, our, uh, our responsibility in this board really seriously. And it's, it's great to see that the community is showing up to help us make a good decision. So thank you.
Okay. So let's jump into, uh, four B, which is OSPT response to council request for board input on council 2026 priorities. In other words, the annual letter to council.
Yeah. So I was on the subcommittee.
You should, you should lead off and I don't know if you want to have the letter up so that we can look at it or.
Yeah, Leah, would you mind, um, for the folks who haven't seen it? Because I think most people haven't.
And this is just for reference, is a working draft right now and we're, we're going to try to finalize it tonight.
Yeah, I think it's due next Friday or something. Um, so the last board meeting, we, um, volunteered. Um, to John Carroll, who's not here tonight, and I volunteered to draft the letter this year. And, um, over the Thanksgiving holiday, we got input from our co-trustees, uh, at the last meeting and we also left. Um, an opening for people to add additional items that they wanted to have incorporated in this letter. Um, and funnel them through Dan. Um, and so, uh, and I'll admit that John did most of the work here. Um, but, but together we, we, uh, drafted this letter. Um, we were given pretty narrow, um, instructions from council, given that they are. Really looking at things that they as in a, in the next 12 months, because they are going to have another council election. So that this particular council can tackle within the next year and, and bring to conclusion. And that's how I read the instructions. However, um, we wanted to be inclusive in all of the other, um, our co-trustees ideas. So this is what we came up with and, um, this, and we drafted this prior to, um, all of the, the outpouring of public input tonight. So. Um, and so I think that there's also some opportunity to even strengthen the language, but you can see that we, we incorporated five. Um, items that we wanted council to look at. And, and one is, number one is the strategic priority seven C multimodal access to open space. Um, the second is Prairie Dog Management, um, and, and that's, um, with regard to seasonal, seasonal limitations on lethal control. Um, the third item is wildfire resilience and cross department, departmental coordination. And the fourth is CU South flood mitigation and the recreation displacement that will happen with it, with its closure. Um, and cost allocation and budget transparency. So those were the main things that, um, that we had, um, drafted for. Um, the rest of the board to, to look and look at and offer feedback tonight on.
Great. Thanks, Michelle, for that preamble. Um, so I want to start by, uh, we'll, we'll jump into the language in a minute. But just to get our dialogue going here on the dais, um, I want to read what John Carroll, who's not here tonight, or another trustee. Uh, wrote, and it really, it really speaks to two of the items. Um, the fire mitigation and, um, and seven C. So he wrote, uh, I just want all of them. I want you other trustees to hear it. So, uh, hi Harmon, given that I'm going to miss the meeting tonight, I wanted to share some thoughts in absentia after reviewing the meeting materials. I was disappointed not to see any focus on near-term quick wins that fall within O S M P's direct control. One example is a bike connection between South Boulder and the Doughty Draw Trail. The type of improvement that could meaningfully advance seven C without requiring a major interdepartmental effort. Given this, I would be supportive of updating the draft letter to council to, to be more explicit that the board supports these kinds of actionable steps in 2026. And that, and that we would need council support in enabling. In addition, I would be supportive of asking council to add language to the charter. Explicitly defining public safety in the form of fire and flood mitigation as an open space use. Given that we are already using open space for these things, I think it makes sense to formalize this. Uh, please feel free to share this sentiment, blah, blah, blah. So. Okay. Well, Michelle, so I think, um, just to get started, um, in seven C. Um, I think one of the things that we could beef up a little is the process. I think it's, it's got to be made more clear in the letter. That, um, that any of the changes, um, would be supported by a thorough assessment process. And, um, and so, you know, I, I used a lot of your language and I, I created a couple of new paragraphs. Uh, also I wanted to make it more explicit that, um. You know, we have the West TSA which does not permit bikes on the trails. Um, and we're really asking just for a limited, small change to be considered. Right? So it's not like Mesa Trail would have bikes. It's, you know, not like Cragmore would have bikes. It's, it's really just to get down to South Mesa. Doughty Draw, right? From, from Greenbrier. And, and that would require that council would update the, uh, the plan, the West TSA. Um, to make a minor adjustment to it. And I think we should explicitly ask for, for that if, if the, if the change is supported by the assessment. So, um, I can email, um, language that I drafted up, which uses mostly what you and John wrote.
Yeah.
Over to Leah and have her put it up.
Yeah, I'm open to that. If you could, you would, you would do that. Um, I guess I'll just preface that we wrote this prior to seeing the packet. And, um, and the materials for tonight. And I'll just tell you, I was severely disappointed. When I opened up the packet and saw the timeline, um, we started talking about this, uh, over, you know, in the Wayback Machine a year ago. And, um, and then John and I served on a subcommittee to advance the seven C topic with staff. And we explicitly talked about addressing quick wins and talking about safety. Um, I mean, if you look at our system and, and this is going to blend into our next topic, but if you look at our system, we have, um. Passive recreation in different parts of our system, but the ones that allow quality bike access are way in the north. Or way in the south. So we've kind of been relegated to these, um, other ends of the city, um, the city system. Um, the north now has a connection, a safe connection to get there. The south does not. And, and I'll tell you that it is not safe. It is, there is no connector. Um, you know, Marshall Road is, the, the cars that travel through there are driving very fast. And I have had my kids who were at B J C at, uh, I think age seven or eight. Ride down that, 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 uh, road, even though, um, Pete Weber said they don't. I, I know for sure that they had, at least at that point in time, but it was during COVID. So maybe they made an exception. Um, but, but so we, we have this disconnection of our system. We want people, we're like, we have bike trails for our bikers, but they can't actually access them safely. And this is a key missing piece in our system. Our 2005 visitor master plan, this is 20 years ago and, and, you know, said, and, um, actually I have that, that language up here. Um, but I mean, this is, you know, something that was drafted two years ago. It's also in our 2019 master plan. But I want to read that, the paragraph. It's on page 26. It says, expand trail opportunities and additional trail improvements. Some specific desires mentioned include longer day long trails, more trail loops. New trails in various areas, trail connections within the open space and mountain park system and regional trail connections. High quality of, sorry, high quality of experience, for example, interesting routes, not near roads or development. Safe trail crossings across roads and separation of trail uses. Um, for example, trail, different trails for different uses. So this is something that has been, this is no surprise to staff. This is no surprise to the community. This is something that. People have wanted for a long time and, um, to, so when I opened up this package and saw the timeline brought way into. What would be 22 years out into the future of this 2005 V M P, I was quite disappointed and. Um, you know, last, uh, time we talked about this in September, we had somebody come here and speak about Magnus White and she was in tears. And if that's your kid or if that's somebody you know. I mean, it's heart wrenching and we are allowing 200 kids a week to, to cross these dangerous roads. And why? I mean, I can understand if we didn't own the property, we do. I would, I can understand if we didn't manage the property that's there, we do. So when we have talked about, uh, addressing low hanging fruit, we've done this time and time again. And so I don't feel like staff has listened to us. So I would be really open, um. Harmon, because I wrote, you know, we wrote this letter very softly before we had seen this last packet to stronger language.
Okay. Well, let's, let's look at the language. Brady, do you have a comment first?
Well, it's the timeline that you're, you're referring to, um, Michelle is the, the milestones and deliverables part of the.
Yeah, right. So in February, we had.
It finishes on the first quarter of 2027 is when. Council action would, it, it's basically anticipates a process by which decisions would be finally vetted and approved by council.
That, that headline, yeah. Yeah, that, yeah. And 22 years out from the 2005 V M P. But yes, I'm, I'm referring to that timeline. Yeah.
Yeah. And so when we talk about a process that we, that would potentially indicate a connector for mountain bikes, we're not talking about this. Timeline.
Well, I don't think so. I, you know, I, I think it could be.
Cause you referred to a process earlier in our discussion between the three of us.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering what, if, if it's not this process, because I hear frustration understandably and how slow it is.
I think we're asking, we're asking, I don't know exactly what the, the dates would be, but the key language, I think is, in the adjusted language is this year. Right? So.
Meaning 2026.
Yeah. So I don't know. Yeah. Cause this is for 2026.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you recall in February, we were given a timeline that was much more advanced and, um, in September, we, it just said TBD. And then now it has a timeline that's quite, uh, far away. But you know, we had, had talked all along about. Look, this doesn't have to be a four, five year process. I mean, North Sky took eight years. That's probably the fastest anything has been built around here, quite frankly. But I don't, I think for every year that we wait, every year we jeopardize these kids' lives and I think that's wrong.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I'm just wondering if we are advocating that it is, is a process is followed. The staff have put together a process that's slow. Do we, are we explicit in the process that we asked for, or did we just refer to it vaguely?
Yeah, I, I think we should look at the language because it specifically references the process, which is amendment of the, the West TSA.
Okay.
And that because council approved the West TSA, I think they should be involved in approving a minor amendment to it. So, you know, I don't want us to just bypass the appropriate process, but, you know, I'm not, I don't think we should. Say to council, this is what we need by this month and this is what we need by this month. And, you know, that's way too much of a, a level of detail for this.
I just haven't read this yet. Can you just keep scrolling a little bit so we can read it? Through assessment and analysis. Thorough. So it begs the question, this was staff's version of thorough and. Thorough assessment. And so. Should we be, should we just say not, not that, something else? Or, uh, again, I, I think we need to be a little bit more explicit.
So I think to me, Brady, the key language is where it says. Um, OSPT plans to work with staff and the community this year to daylight a thorough assessment process to consider the opening of bikes. Of an existing, to consider the opening two bikes of an existing trail or a new trail to be developed in combination. With environmental remediation. And that, that talks about a process that takes place within the year. And it also talks about not just exploring opening a trail, but you know, we took a walk. All, you know, about a four mile hike from Greenbrier down to South Mesa Trail with staff. And the South Mesa Trailhead and what we saw on the South Boulder Creek Trail was, you know, the evidence of a lot of muddy areas. Where, you know, the trail was going through places that would cause trail closures all the time in the spring. Um, riparian areas that need to be protected. And so, you know, we're actually, there's, there's some language in there. There's some, that's doing some work around. You know, considering potential environmental remediation of a trail that is problematic. Um, you know, which is, is sort of a, you know, a part, part and parcel to, you know, if we're going to open this up. To additional users that might have impacts. And additional uses that might have impacts. Let's think about how we can mitigate those impacts through remediation all within.
Right.
You know, a one-year study process. So, yeah, I don't know if that's.
And staff had said they had been already evaluating that for some time because of, uh, the realignment of the Blue Bell. Or, um, trail. So it's not something that is new.
Well, just to be precise, then I would just say we just modify, we just say through thorough assessment and analysis completed within 2026.
Mr. Robinson, could you speak closer to your.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I was just going to say if, I mean, if, if that's the. The goal, then we should at least say that we want that completed in 2026. I mean, I just think we should be explicit in that. And then the question I have, and I agree, we shouldn't wait on this. The. That being said, what if a, a, a new alignment was indicated? That, you know, one of the, one of the great things about the, the, uh, north, the, the North Sky Trail. If, if you'd asked me to build the trail, I would have just put it on the railroad grade and it would have been done. And, and staff didn't do that because they're professionals and they know how to make a great mountain biking trail or mountain, great multi-use trail. Um, and so what if during the assessment? The assessment indicates that actually there needs to be a new alignment, which would need new construction. Are we asking council to do the whole kit and caboodle in 2026? I guess.
See, I, I don't think we're asking council to oversee this process. We're saying this is what we plan on doing in 2026. Clearly says that, right? And then it's saying that we're asking you to make the minor amendments to the West TSA.
To enable this.
Yeah. I mean, why are we trying to tell council what the timeframe is for what they have to do? It's only going to come up to council for changes to the plan. And we're saying if we say the changes are merited by the analysis, please approve it. I don't, I don't see why we have to be more prescriptive. Of the elected officials than what we already have.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm not saying the wording is perfect. I'm just saying, I don't know why we need to be, you know, telling them every step of the way.
No, I, I don't, anyway, I, what, what are we, what are we asking them to accomplish in 2026, Michelle, in your view? What, what is the request that, that is for sure done in 2026?
Um, I would like them to expedite the, uh, the analysis for a connection down there. We could boil the whole process of seven C, which is, I think is totally appropriate to have that timeline. But we've already identified a need. I'm not saying we as in me, I'm saying the community has identified this as a need. Um, and so I don't think that that has to wait for this entire process. Uh, that, and, and I'm sure. That, that timeline can slip too. I mean, I know that there's been staffing issues and there's priority changes, but, um. You know, I am open to, of course, if there's a, a better, uh, alignment for the, um, the habitat, I'm totally open to that. I just want them.
I mean, or the, or the cyclists.
Or for the cyclists, yeah.
Presumably these trails weren't constructed, but you know, we've learned a lot about mountain bike trails the last 10, 20 years.
For sure. I mean, I've walked it twice. I, once, uh, with Harmon and staff, and I think that was what, two months ago? Um, and then I walked it once again in the spring. Like it's, it's nothing to really toot your horn about because one of it is a road, you know, right, wrong fence. And the other part is actually very rocky and, and people don't go beyond, I think. The first half mile or mile and that we hardly saw anybody on that trail, um, both times, but, um, it, it is not. Precious, um, in terms of hiking quality, in my opinion. And yes, I hike too. Um, and so I, I, I think that, um, we have looked at this trail and I know that there are some opportunities. Now, if it was a trade-off between waiting 10 years for this beautiful, wonderful trail realignment. Versus, um, hey, B M A and a bunch of the high school kids are going to go out there and volunteer and clear those giant rocks out. Especially in the areas that, um, are not well traveled by hikers. Um. I prefer the for, that, I prefer that, uh, and while we're doing this other eight-year, 10-year process, especially when funding is a, a question. But.
Okay. So just, but I'm clear that the implicit in this is the assumption that. The trail could be opened within 2026 without much work and mountain bikes could be on it. It's ready.
It's entirely possible. Yes, it is entirely possible.
Yeah. And I think one thing that, that we saw is that, you know, between Blue Stem and South Boulder Creek, you have two parallel trails. And that end up in the same place. And so, you know, I think within that year of study, you know, possibly there would be an interim measure that says, you know, one of them's open to. Bikes and one of them's not.
Yeah.
And at least we. And at least we can get the kids down there safely and then we can talk about realignment. We can talk about environmental remediation, closure, you know, riparian restoration. We've got years to do that when kids aren't out there on the street. So, I mean, if you have more you want to add to strengthen it, please.
No, I'm happy with what you wrote. And appreciate you taking the time to do that. How do you feel, Brady, about it?
Um, I wish I had seen this language a little earlier. But that's, this is the nature of the work sometimes. So uh, I'm just trying to figure out if it's, if, if this is precise enough. But this is not a binding document. This is, this is a letter to council. So maybe I'm overthinking it.
Yeah, it's possible. I, I think that we can also follow it up with individual conversations with them.
Yeah.
One thing I think council will appreciate is, you know, we're telling them what we want to do and how they can play their role to help us finalize whatever comes out of that process. And, and I want to really, as a board, I want to try to avoid asking council to do our work. They're not here. They don't, you know, they're not working with staff on these projects the way we do every month. And so it's nice to let council know.
Yeah.
This is our priority. This is how we intend to achieve it. And if we get to a, a place where you can pitch in, this is how we suggest you do it.
Yeah. I guess the one.
They don't like it, they can always tell us.
Well, yeah, well, they'll either tell us, or just ignore us. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess the only thing, I mean, when we talked about the last time, I, I think I was one of the people to advocate, like, let's try this out and see what happens. So I'm not trying to drag my feet here, but I do, and, and so I also think it's important for everybody here, at least me, say that I, I think there's a sense that once, like, once a trail is open to bikes, that, that, that's the way it will be forever after. Um, and, uh, uh, for one, you know, if this happens in twenty twenty six, looking at the sustainability of this current alignment, looking at uh, separation of users, if, if there's, if there's major impacts, I mean, being thoughtful about that. And, and the, the one good thing about moving really, really slow is, and I agree with your statement, like a whole generation, or somebody else said, a whole generation of cyclists would be exposed to the dangerous road commuting for their entire high school career, if this goes on a normal timeline, and that's unacceptable. So I hear that. That being said, the benefit of going slow is you do it right. You know, and so I wouldn't, I just would want to make sure that we're still thinking about the possibility of another alignment, that, you know, at a future time, if this is expedited in twenty twenty six, I just wouldn't want that to be off the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one of the great things about our staff on O S M P is that, you know, it, it doesn't always take eight years to do a study. Sometimes it does implement a program and then there's iterative study to see how did this work? You know, like what we're doing with the wildfire management and the wooey, you know, that was a program that said, let's do this right now and then we'll study it, see how, how it did. Uh, I think we can probably expect that that would occur.
Let me, let me just say one thing. There was some real complicated private land issues with the North Sky Trail, and it took a long time. You guys, as I've said before, you staff, you killed it. And so I'm not trying to throw you under the bus for taking the time to figure out how to get alignment through some of those tricky private property areas. This is not one of those cases, so it shouldn't take that long, I think is what we're saying. So anyway, in summary, I support a connector. I support us trying this out. If, and I don't know what thorough assessment analysis means, that's maybe not our job to, to figure this out right now. I just want to make sure that whatever happens there in the long term is the right alignment, the right de- design, the right separation, and that I don't know what the use patterns are, you know, who, what, what's the pedestrian traffic? As, as someone who has walked a trail with bicycles with my young daughter and someone cruised by, and I felt the fear for my daughter's safety, because somebody cruised by, I get it. I know what it feels like to have someone, you know, either yourself or someone you love feel threatened by, by bikes and, and, and if this is super, if this is a very important connector for pedestrians, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I live in the north, so, you know, such a big city, we just don't, we just don't travel that much within the city.
She'll come down sometimes. It's actually pretty nice.
Well, maybe she'll.
We'll take you down.
Yeah, but, so, so, anyway, you hear what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I think an experiment here is fine, and if, if this is what it takes, I think it's fine. And those of you, those who would be opposed to this, I want to say for me, I'm willing, I think we should take a hard look at it and make sure that we do our very best to ally the concerns of, of everyone in this and waiting for a, a whole new generation of cyclists to, to en- enjoy safe passage is unacceptable. I agree with that.
I, I appreciate all that, Brady. I mean, uh, if you all go back into the Wayback Machine, I think we had a June meeting and the North Sky was opening in July. Do you remember that meeting where we had like all these people signed up and they spoke for a really long time about how I mean, the sky was going to fall because bikes were being allowed on this trail? And the fear mongering that happens. There's real concerns for sure. Um, but I think that we just need to kind of have an open mind about this. And I think that cyclists are also humans and they can do good things as well. And I assume that, and I know that the Fairview, Fairview High School teams teach etiquette, trail etiquette. And if this does happen, they'll be even extra strict about teaching their kids this.
And by the way, whichever, uh, member of the public came up with the idea that should this trail ever be built, it should be called the South Sky Trail? That was very, very inspired.
Um, okay. So we are settled on number one. I believe that you had another, uh, that John had brought up a second change to this letter.
Yeah. So I think that's not till number three. So maybe let's jump to number two.
Okay. So the second point on that letter was prairie dog management seasonal limitations. Uh, do we still want to include this on the letter at all?
I mean, I think this is important to, to some of the public. It's also in opposition to the memo. Because the memo explicitly says no, no major changes in twenty twenty six. The staff memo, and this is asking for a consideration of a major change as, as per the way we deal, we, we, we make decisions on prairie dogs. This would be not in accordance with what the staff put in the memo. So I just wanted to be clear that if this is what we're asking council to do, review the seasonal prohibition on lethal control as part of a broader prairie dog policy evaluation. The staff memo said they didn't want to do that in twenty twenty six.
I mean, I'm okay with, with recommending that, you know, I'm okay with putting this in the letter, even, even though it, it contradicts the staff memo. I think maybe we can, we can, um, soften the language a little bit to create some leeway.
It's pretty soft. I didn't, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to mention it. I, I don't think we should ever go i- in opposition to things that are in their staff memos lightly.
Mm-hmm.
And we should do it with eyes wide open. And so this is one of those cases where there's a minor disagreement or a, a little bit of dissonance between what is in the memo and what we're asking council to consider.
Okay.
But I also agree that I think this is appropriate. I want it in the letter.
Okay. I mean, I guess OSPT, at least I'm, I'm in my fifth year. After tonight, only three more meetings. Get my life back. Um, the.
This is not that.
Oh, yeah.
It's really a wonderful commitment. Thank you.
It is, it is a good one. Um, actually now I don't know where I was going with that.
Prairie dogs, remember prairie dogs, prairie dogs, we're talking about prairie dogs.
Oh, I was just gonna say that this is not the first time that the board has disagreed with, with staff. Um, you, you know, I think different, uh, there's been a number of examples that, that we didn't vote, um, with staff.
No, I, I know. I just also don't take it lightly.
So I have some, some minor tweaks to the language in two here, and if I could ask, um, Leah, are you typing? Okay. Couldn't, can I have Leah just, I'll, I'll dictate those.
Sure.
You can type them in, because it's just a few words and, and then we can look at it. So the, um, the first word, uh, I want to change is current city policy. I think it's more accurate to just call it, um, current city plans, because it's, it's not a, a policy, it's actually in a, in a plan. So
Okay.
change the word policy to plans. Um, and then, uh, we're after interest in at the end of that paragraph, um, instead of reconsidering this policy, um, and this is the, the, the softening I was talking about, um, to change it to say providing more flexibility to enable lethal control efforts to take place year round.
Okay.
And I think that's more clear about what we want.
I think it's good.
Yeah, I think it is more clear. Yep.
And then what we're asking council to do is to review limitations that may prevent year-round lethal control, right? Limitations that may prevent year-round lethal control. And then you take out the seasonal prohibition on lethal control, I guess.
How do you feel about this, Brady? This is mainly, um, something that you cared about.
I mean, I think, I think.
Split on it, so.
Well, well, I, I mean, nobody, nobody wants this. Um, no, this, I think this is nobody wants this, and we also want the management actions that we take to be effective. And if we're, if we've got one foot in both camps, it's just counterproductive. Uh, if, if these are vaguely in order of importance in the letter, I would demote this to number five personally. I, the, what's currently number five is more important and I would personally want council paying more attention to cost allocation than this particular thing. And so my, my only suggestion would be number two goes to five, and then everything presumably kind of pops up.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'd be willing to do that. Sure. Okay, so, three, um, this is what, the one that John was talking about in his note to me. So he says he'd be supportive of asking council to add language to the charter explicitly defining public safety in the form of fire and flood mitigation as an open space use. So in, 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 um, it's, uh, section one seventy six of the charter, all of the open space uses are laid out. And from talking to Dan, I think there's been, there's been conversation already about talking about wildfire um, resilience, wildfire protection, wildfire mitigation, flood protection, flood resilience as things that we want to see in the charter as, you know, open space lands can serve those purposes. They can be used for those purposes. And, and in the past, when it's been brought up, the city attorney's take on that as well, the public safety and public health and safety stuff that's already in the charter covers that. But I think there's, there's a movement to make it explicit that wildfire protection and flood protection be in the charter. And so.
A movement by whom? By, by citizenry or internal?
Citizens, council people, you know, I think it's, it, it keeps coming up. And, um, and so, you know, one of the things that, that I think we could do is we could just add to this wildfire resilience piece, um, that, you know, we ask council to consider updating the charter in section one seventy six to include a wildfire and flood protection as uses for open space lands.
I mean, that's, that's already the case. At least with wildfire, right?
You mean, like, we're already doing it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would, would this result in meaningful on-the-ground changes in terms of management?
Yeah, that, that's a Dan question.
Well, I mean, I think where, wh- when city staff have looked at it, we turn to one seventy one, which is functions of the department, in which we're charged with supervising, administering and executing all open space programs, plans, functions and activities of the city. So the community wildfire protection plan is a plan of the city, and we're in charge of fulfilling that plan on the city open space lands. So obviously, you know, doing wildfire protection is fulfilling plans that involve open space. So uh, if you look at what the function of the department is, it's, it's, it's pretty broad in terms of administering and preserving and maintaining and executing plans. Uh, so I, I have never seen a rub from a management perspective of us having a timeout about a wildfire resilience effort because maybe it goes against the charter. It's, it's never come up. Um, um, and I think our, our city attorney staff and others that would look at it would probably agree with that assessment of our purview of a function of the department and section one seventy one.
Okay, thanks. And, and Harmon, did you also include flood mitigation?
I did, I did.
And so would, would flood mitigation being included in the charter, would that have a meaningful, potentially meaningful change on management practices in, on the ground?
Well, again, if, uh, you know, if, if including flood mitig- uh, mitigation efforts is like re-channeling the creek, you know, putting it back its bank, reconnecting floodplains, all of that, that's stuff that we do and have done, uh, in terms of caring for and maintaining, uh, the open space system. Uh, uh, protection of floodplains is a specific charter purpose. Um, so again, uh, you know, there is a, under one seventy seven, I believe it is, there is a mention of structures, uh, that structures building on open space shall be limited to certain facets. So uh, open space, uh, uh, under our current charter, you, one could read that building dams all over open space, uh, would be in conflict with that, uh, uh, improving open space lands, improving. So that's why, for instance, on the South Water Creek, we went through a disposal process. Because that includes, uh, you know, building of structures and maintain, but other elements of flood protection are certainly within the management of an open space system.
But, but putting this in the charter wouldn't have eliminated the, the requirement for a disposal to do the CU South flood mitigation?
I, it, it, it depends on what the language would have been, uh.
Do, do we need to, do you think, I, I've heard talk of the fire, the, the wildfire mitigation. Do, do you think we need to include flood in this too, and, and a recommendation to council?
Yeah, I think they kind of go hand in hand as two, two biggest natural hazards that we face.
I'm just thinking of unintended consequences of this.
Yeah, I sent you some draft language.
Michelle, do you have an opinion about including flood or?
Um, I'm okay with including flood. I think, um, yeah, it just would have been better to, for us to have a little bit more time to discuss this as a group and, uh, beyond just the three of us, although I know John weighed in. But, um, yeah, I'm supportive of, of adding both of those.
I feel comfortable with wildfire. I, I just feel like flood mitigation could be different, just, it's just structurally, because sometimes you're building stuff. And I don't know. I just, I, I guess all I'll say is I don't understand. I'm, I'm not, and presumably this will go through a lot more thought process than what we're doing right now, but I don't understand all the possible implications of including flood mitigation as a charter purpose on open space. I, I, I do not know what may or may not come as a function of that in the future. And for example, would it have changed how CU South um, has unfolded in our community over these many years? Um, and if so, it's a hot potato to put in to the charter, so. I just don't.
Yeah, I mean,
I could make a suggestion, um, rather than guessing if it's charter, uh, you know, if we want to leave it out for now, I'd be happy to go back and solicit some opinion on, on how the charter is interpreted now in terms of the flexibility and allowance for those such things. And if it turns out that there's gaps or that you all remain concerned about, it certainly can go in next year's letter. I mean, I know that the charter committee has kicked this around in the past as well.
Flood or, or fire, wildfire, both?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
And, and do you think there's more of a concern with one or the other, Dan, or?
Well, I personally feel like the wildfire resilience, like I said, I've never, uh, and, and we're starting to be, you know, we're really ramping up and we've been in that business for decades. And I've never seen a rub where we felt like we needed to stop something or we couldn't do something based on a limitation of charter. I think the concern about the flood is real in terms of, uh, is open space from a structure standpoint going to be, uh, more aggressively used for flood control? Uh, and, and do those purposes actually serve an open space pers- purpose or not? And and the implications of it. I think there's greater implications with the flood and my personal.
Okay. Well, in, in that case, then. Okay, well, in, in that case, then I would, I would su- support including wildfire in our letter this year. And, and, and if there's reason, compelling reason to include flood in the future, I would cer- certainly support that too, but. Without total clarity on what. Um, the implications could be, I'd, I'd feel more comfortable just keeping it to wildfire.
You too, Michelle?
Yeah, I, I do too, I, I would like, I, I'm not gonna be here next year, but. Three more meetings, um, but, but I, I think it would be good to really analyze the implications of that being a charter purpose.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I would be fine with both wildfire and flood, and, and if. There was, if there was concern like what you're, what you're voicing Brady, um, that could be allayed by adding more language like. You know, maybe utilized for wildfire and flood mitigation, you know, to the extent that such use doesn't conflict with. You know, conservation and open space purposes, you know. That's not the way the rest of chapter or charter section one seventy six is written. But if, you know, if that kind of guides the discussion at council a little bit more. Then we could keep both of them in, because I'm concerned, you know, it's been twelve years since the flood, but. You know, another one could come, and, and right now everybody is, is mostly afraid of fire, but flood's a serious problem here. And there are tons of ways to do flood mitigation without building dams. You know, all these riparian restorations, all of these wetlands, all these reconnecting of creeks to their flood plains, that's flood mitigation.
And that's clearly what we do currently. I mean, and within the charter.
Okay, well, given what I know now, with all due respect, I support wildfire in it, I do not support flood mitigation in it tonight. Because I don't understand all the implications, and, and I think this is one of those places where unless there's a very compelling reason, going slower is better. Uh, and I do think there is, uh, from what I've heard, more of a kind of movement on the wildfire side. And to your point, I mean, it's, it's the. It's a danger de jour. You're right, but if, if Dan was saying, well, we're, we're hamstrung, there's a bunch of stuff we want to do in open space, we can't do it because it's flood mitigation's not. Included in charter purpose, but I'm not hearing him say that. So, for what it's worth, that's, that's, that's where I'm today.
Well, Leo, why don't you take out the words and flood? Can we vote on that? Okay, let's move on.
Oh, um, given that we're asking council to consider a charter change, I think it's a big deal, I would. Is it currently number two? I would even consider putting it number one. I, I don't think it's super important, is it, is it number, yeah, what's, what's number two right now? That is, okay, well, one or two, I guess either one is, I don't know, Michelle, if you have a strong feeling about that?
I have a strong feeling about it being one staying one.
Okay, well, I think a charter mem is a big deal, and two is still. Uh, uh, part of our top two priorities, so that's fine.
All right, turn it back over to you, chairwoman of the. Letter committee.
Well, then John got out of this, um, yeah, so is there anything else that we would like to modify before? Saying done?
I have nothing.
Okay, all right, so uh, thank you Leah for drafting that, and Dan, will you send that out on our behalf?
I think we'll have our secretary do that.
Does any motions need to be, okay, thank you. Leah just gave me the.
I don't think we need a motion.
Okay, all right.
That's our letter. Well done, thank you.
That was an easy letter, right?
At least we weren't getting into grammar and punctuation.
Alrighty, so, back to the agenda.
All right, we've got uh under matters from the, the department, we have two main items and a, a verbal update. Uh, regarding uh some future work from Excel Energy. Uh, but, and as Harmon noted, that uh items A and B have been swapped, so we will start off with. Uh, so G Plan Priority Seven, but I would ask Chair, do you, if we're gonna take five minutes, is now the time, or, or do you wanna just keep, keep going?
Why don't we do it after this item?
All right, and I'll invite uh, um, our staff up, uh Jenna and Casey, who are gonna be. Uh, leading a presentation on where we're at, and I'll just uh. Uh, allow them some time to settle in by saying this is a transition night uh for this issue. Uh, as you know, for uh much of twenty twenty five, uh, we were in more of the data mode. Uh, pulling together data that was uh, uh, starting to paint a story for us about uh, uh, sis seven C. And now we are formally moving into uh a planning project, uh, and so we're seeing different staff come. Uh, come before you, uh, uh, versus staff that were here previously from our human dimensions team and, and other members of Jeff's team. And uh, we're going to uh walk through uh what this planning project's scope and timeline and milestones. Are going to be, what our community engagement and touches look like uh this year. And what our touches and timeline looks for coming back to the board on various points, and I think uh. Uh, some of you already talked about it, but uh we do believe that this project deserves uh an assessment and analysis. Uh, no matter what the uh particular strategy is, so that's what this team has been doing the past. Eight weeks is looking at uh what we call a project charter, which looks into all things scope, timeline. Uh, and especially uh paying attention to what community and board engagement looks like, so I think I'm turning it over to you first, Casey.
Hello, board, nice to see you tonight, and for members of the public, my name is Casey French, and I'm the Planning Manager. Uh, with Open Space and Mountain Parks, so glad to be here tonight. We really are excited for this project, this, um, as Dan alluded to, this is our first touch at it, you know, we're, we're, we're getting it, we've spent. Um, I'm very happy that we have new staff um with us that I would like to introduce, we have Jenna Van Grun here with us, um, and she just joined our team recently. Um, and she comes from an environmental and planning background, she's also done some open space planning as well as transportation. So what I'm really thrilled about with that mix is I really think it's a good fit for this project to help us keep it moving in an expedited manner. Because a year for us is as expedited, um, and also, um, I also think it's a good fit for the department. So, um, as Dan said, there were, we're kind of getting started, uh, looking at pulling together that interdisciplinary team which we've been doing. Um, reaching out to our citywide, um, other departments, and I'm putting together a community engagement plan for this upcoming year. So uh with that, I will turn it over to Jenna.
All right, hello everyone, nice to meet you all, or I guess get better acquainted with a lot of you, with my first time being at the. Uh, Board of Trustees meeting, so yeah, today I'll go over a little bit more about city strategic plan seven C. And the multimodal improvements assessment that goes along with this project. Uh, for this, just so everyone's clear on what's gonna be going through in this meeting is. I'll just give really quick planning context, I think people are pretty um aware of at this point. I'll talk about the purpose of the multimodal improvements assessment that we'll be doing, what is in scope and out of scope. The planning approach that goes with that, and then next steps for the board. So just at a high level, I'll hit on the planning context aspects. Um, everyone, as your, most of you are aware, that we're kind of touching mostly on citywide strategic plan seven C. About maintaining a transportation system with multimodal opportunities and identifying ways to make key trail connections. Uh, we, OSMP also did adopt the Climate Action Plan, and through this project, we're also gonna be addressing. Uh, Climate Plan Objective Two with Solution two point two about reducing emissions from visitor travels. Uh, from the OSMP Master Plan, there are a few different things that this hits, but uh the two main ones that this project. And scope focus on are EHR three, addressing the global climate, climate crisis here and now. And then RRSE point four, encouraging multimodal access to trailheads. And so, for the purpose of the project, we know that the conversation at this point has been a bit more focused on trail connections. But we do want to emphasize that we're looking at this systematically, uh, we're conducting a system-wide assessment. Through all of OSMP land to identify those actionable improvements that we can make. Uh, we will be focusing primarily on what OSMP can direct on its lands or. Uh, to its lands, like direct connections or things outside of that. And then finally, continuing to build on a foundation for safe, connected and equitable access. Um, as OSMP has been already working through. And there, like I was talking about before, trail connections have been the priority for this project so far. But there are three different buckets that we are looking at when wanting to make multimodal improvements to the OSMP system. So, education and outreach, uh, really what that is, is what we can do to make the community members more knowledgeable about multimodal opportunities that exist. For trails, uh, trailheads and access points, access points being some of those more neighborhood scale entrance spots. To our trail system, they're usually less formal, and then finally, trail connections, so. Uh, that one of the main parts of that is kind of gonna be around identifying key trail connections and some of the allowed uses. That could make access more safe. So I'll kind of go into those a little bit more for what is in scope in each of these, and starting with education and outreach. Um, updating visitor materials is in scope, this can be like handouts or mentioning. Or enhancing social media and communications, uh, so that people know how to get to OSMP land. And then better wayfinding tools for non-driving access, so wayfinding potentially off of OSMP property that can help people. Uh, be better guided there. Trailheads and access points in scope is. Uh, clear signage to and at trailheads, which can also include small off-property improvements such as flashing walk beacons. Or crosswalk improvements when warranted through the Department of Transportation. And then potential new neighborhood scale access points, so if we're seeing a lot of traffic from specific areas and there is an easy. Spot that we can put a new access point in, that's something we would be investigating through this. And then finally, improvements to existing trailheads, uh, just to note that entirely new trailheads are out of scope for this. And so, uh, finally getting into a little bit more about trail connections is. Uh, to start, key trail connectors that can enhance access to and within OSMP land without resulting in significant impacts. So we do really want to emphasize that this project won't just be moving forward if it solely addresses some of these multimodal concerns that we see. We will still be considering other impacts to big focus areas for OSMP, such as the ecological impact or visitor experience. Uh, in addition, we'll be looking at small connections out of OSMP jurisdiction to regional trail networks, so. Think that trails such as the Longmont to Boulder Trail and making uh connections to some of those more regional ones that are often used. Uh, we'll be looking at additional uses allowed on certain trail connectors that would strengthen multi-addic- access, so for example. Adding bicycles as a trail use in certain areas that can connect existing bicycle trails. Where safe bike route alternatives do not currently exist. And then finally, uh, we will be planning to prioritize some of the. Trails that we've seen come through different planning efforts and prioritizing those based on which address multimodal. Um, safe access. Finally, I kind of touched on this already with the flashing beacons and uh crosswalks. But we will be able to do some minor physical improvements outside of OSMP's jurisdiction. That make it more safer or connected access, uh, primarily things that are gonna be low-impact and feasible. We also do recognize that this could just be input or recommendations to departments. Like the Department of Transportation, but ultimately it is up to that department on if they are able to include it within their work plan. And now just a highlight of two things for out of scope is uh parking fees. Well, we want this focus for this project to really be on positive multimodal opportunities. Instead, and ways to commute to OSMP. Uh, the OSPT has also previously raised equity concerns about fees during the RFP fee study last year. Um, that study ended up determining that we are recovering costs within existing fee structures. And the city will be engaging in the long-term financial strategy project next year, so that's why we're. Another reason why we're not going to be looking into it this year. And then finally, some of the ongoing work in regional collaboration. Uh, there are a lot of big efforts that are happening around multimodal access or trails currently. Uh, just to mention some, the Lafayette to Boulder Bike Way Study. The Rocky Mountain Greenway and Front Range Trails, and then also Trail Access Management and Parking Strategy that kind of looks into. Access management widely, this does take up forty percent of OSMP's planning um capacity. And so, because these efforts already happened, we wanted to make sure that we're very focused more specifically on. Multimodal improvements on OSMP or to or within it. So that these efforts can still be going and they remain important, but we'll be a little more focused in. So for the planning approach, uh, what you're seeing here is just the different phases that we'll be going through. You could see it starts twenty twenty five Q four, which is what we're in right now, and we'll have an ideal finish in twenty twenty six Q four. With the potential for council action depending uh certain recommendations that end up being made, starting in twenty twenty seven. So this is a very, um, a year may seem like a long time, but this is a very expedited process for a planning project. And I'll just go into the next slide too to show this, it's a very expedited process to have three engagement windows as well as multiple OSPT touches. So it's a lot being fit into a year, even if it does feel like it may be a little longer. Um, but before I guess I go into some of these phases, I wanted to show. A higher level calendar on a monthly basis to show when these things would be taking place throughout twenty twenty six. When those engagement windows would happen, and then also when we would be updating OSPT on uh some of the matters from this project. So I'll go into phase one first, uh, phase one will take place, or is currently taking place, and we'll go into Q one. And this is primarily focused on the background research and assessment, so. We came here in September and a lot of that background research has already been done, and so we're more so at the stage where we are analyzing. All of that data and existing conditions, uh, to kind of start making. I, or suggestions about preliminary opportunities or strategies or ways we can move forward. Uh, we'll also be conducting a system-wide assessment, so this will be looking in gaps in trail networks. Uh, neighborhood and transit connections or signage and wayfinding needs to figure out maybe some of the priority areas that we're looking at. We will begin identifying preliminary opportunities and strategies. So that in the next phase, we can come to the public with that all, and then finally, just information sharing ahead of that first engagement window. In Q two of twenty twenty six, we'll be looking at those prelum- preliminary opportunities and strategies with the public, with OSPT. And bringing all of this information to all of you. Uh, what this really is, is kind of gathering at a high level what areas we want to focus in, whether. We see things such as wayfinding to be a big priority through this effort, so just those higher level, what direction do we want to go in for this project? We'll be doing the first engagement window, sharing those initial findings and the opportunities. And then conducting an intercept survey, which essentially what this is, is going out to the trails and meeting the people where they are. Uh, we think that this is a good way to reduce self-selection bias and also reach people who may not have otherwise participated in this uh project. And then finally, just also doing a questionnaire to get some more feedback around what we have suggested. So in Q three of twenty twenty six, we'll be developing and bringing forward a draft package of the solutions. Um, and this is really, I think, where we are transitioning from looking at more of those strategies and. Opportunities and priorities for this project and forming those into concrete solutions that can address them. So I think an easy example to use is something like wayfinding, maybe we see there's a specific area where wayfinding could be used. And the solution is identifying exactly where wayfinding could be that would make it less confusing to get around. Um, the projects that are developed through this will be ran through a feasibility analysis. And things that are gonna be considered with, with all of this are like ecological considerations, safety, connectivity. Access benefits and visitor experience, and based on this, this is where we can really hone in on the. Draft package that we will be bringing to everyone for an engagement window two. And then also talking about the methodology and everything that went into the scoring make trick, so that we can make sure that we're really transparent with the community at this stage, especially. And then finally, phase four, which is in Q four, uh, where we're going to be refining the package of solutions, and so. This, it will be the stage where we start to include the clear actions, the timelines, costs associated. And different milestones that would kind of come with it, especially with some of that inter-agency or inter-departmental uh. Crossover that we'd be doing. And then coming forth one last time in an engagement window to the public so that they. Whether they've been speaking passionately about multiple topics already, or whether they haven't had a chance to speak yet. This is a really, will be the last opportunity for community feedback before we finalize that package of solutions. Um, and I just wanted to show the project timeline, I know I'm throwing out a lot of information about what's going to fit and where, and so I think this is a really good visual to show. Uh, all of these different steps in the process, the moving pieces. And when we will be able to provide O S B T with updates. And so I think kind of pulling this whole presentation together is obviously we are in the first. Step or first phase of this project where we're starting to work into the assessment and the opportunities we can go on. Um, but our next steps will be coming in March with an O S B T written update about. Like or a summary of the assessment findings and preliminary opportunities, then previewing the upcoming engagement window. On April, we'll be doing public outreach, including that questionnaire and survey. And then we'll come in June with those engagement results. Uh, including an intercept survey typically takes a little bit longer to review. Results and kind of uh determine what the findings are from that, so that's why it'd be in June, we'd be coming back to S B T and then finally just. As we go on, um, coming back and providing the opportunity for O S B T to provide their own feedback. And also respond to the feedback they're seeing from the community. And so ultimately, that's where we are with the multimodal improvements assessment project or um otherwise known as seven C. But we look forward to, I guess, hearing any questions or comments that people have and moving this project forward finally. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um Jenna, and uh we don't have a bell or anything that we ring for new planners, but um welcome.
Thank you.
Um, it's great presentation, so does anybody, the three of us? Have any uh initial comments or questions right now? No Brady, what about you, Michelle?
I feel like I've dominated this conversation, but um this is something that I care about a lot. Um, I do have a question, Jenna, and welcome. Um, why do um, I, because we just did a whole host of human dimensions and, you know, analyses and. Intercept surveys and we've gone through the data quite a lot. Um, what would be different about this intercept survey than what you've, what we've asked before?
I might tackle that one.
Sure.
Um, so this intercept survey would be very specific to um the the subject matter that we would be asking the community in the questionnaire. So a recent example of that was um for e-bikes, we did something particular. It's not a system-wide intercept survey, it is kind of mirroring the questionnaire, but it is a statistically valid um survey. And it reduces bias when we know that we're going to have um. We might have, might see particular groups um involved and we want to hear from those groups, but we also want to understand what. Other people who we might not reach through our traditional questionnaire, we will can reach and understand, uh better understand what other visitors um. Think about some of the proposals that we're sharing, so um it it really is to just understand what the community wants in a variety of ways.
Um, can you remind me, when are those intercept surveys supposed to happen?
Yeah, the intercept server, there would be one and it would be during the first engagement window, which is in April.
April, okay. Um, and then, I mean, for, I I've been tracking this issue for a while, but could you explain for the public? The one-year delay, Dan, in this timeline that we're seeing now versus the one that you presented in February?
Yeah, as I mentioned, there's uh a a couple of different reasons. Uh, one was. Staff just getting our hands around of exactly how to incorporate a system-wide approach. With also looking at very site-specific things, so elements, so there's a little bit of uh. Uh, deliberation and and sort of. Conversation going at the staff level and then we just, and then there's just been huge staff capacity. Two of our three planners were not with us for the majority of twenty twenty-five. And the existing planners were already on projects, I think Fort Chambers, Poor Farm is is the big one that our our remaining. Uh, planning staff was on, which uh is nearly a full-time job in and of itself. And speaking of that project, that also had very similar windows of engagements and back and forth with the board. Uh, that we're going through with you all, so if you can kind of think of. Uh, another project in which we sequentially work through something, uh that's probably one to uh kind of keep in mind of how we brought the community along. And the board along and staff along at the same time, but in terms of why we're uh months delayed, I I would say it's a. A a big part is the staff capacity issue.
Okay, yeah, it's it's more than months, but I mean. Um, and it looks like it lines to about a year um delta. So can you elaborate a little bit more on the first point of was, you said that you needed to have more staff deliberation, was there? Disagreement ab- about the timeline that you had originally presented, could you just elaborate a little bit more on your first point?
Yeah, I think that when uh the strategic plan came out in twenty twenty-four to look at seven C. Uh, at that time and and the and the months of what is our role in this and. And uh where where can we take leads on this uh at that time? Uh, to be quite frank, there wasn't a specific focus on a specific solution. That could ha- that has, that could have a big capacity issue in terms of what is needed for this project. Um, uh, uh. If if we're looking for things that are out of current scope within plans, that is a different level of. Community engagement, uh community conversation, board engagement and potential council. Communication than perhaps what we were thinking of when we were initially embarking on seven C. As a way to uh 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 look at multimodal. So that's one area where we are looking at, what we were initially thinking probably isn't, we need something more than that. Uh, if we're looking at uh oper- uh potential solutions that were outside current plan guidance and policy, so. I don't know if any of you feel free to chime in on that, but that would be my read on it.
Okay, um. I guess that my last question is really about um. What your reflections are based on what we heard tonight, what you've heard from the community, what you've heard from the board tonight and in September and and through. The process when we were talking about this um at our board retreat last year. Like we we've heard loud and clear, I I had the the tally, we had like forty-eight emails and then. Twenty, I mean, we had sixty-nine people speak in favor um either in our inbox or um here or tonight. Um, in favor of this. How can you modify the timeline to include something that perhaps? Um, could be on a more expedited timeline?
And Michelle, can I?
Yeah.
Jump in, and also if if that's not exactly the question. Is there, it, you know, is there a an absolute coupling between? This connector that we're talking about, that we've been talking about all all evening. Um, and this planning process, does, does this have to actually play all the way out to its end? Before any changes could be made in the West TSA, for example, to allow bike use to make that connection? Or can those two processes happen in parallel? Would would that be fair to ask as well?
That's a good point, yeah.
I can say that we we've envisioned this as a coupling. Um, I think it. I mean, as we just seen from a a turnout when we're just initially starting, you know, tonight's turnout when we are just at the beginning of scoping. Um, I was also here for the West TSA where we had over a thousand comments. Um, I was relooking at the materials, um just this south section, we had, you know. For twenty pages of that council packet, five of them were focused on this, you know, connection, there was a lot. It took a lot of time to have that community discussion, and so we felt like having a community discussion about just. One trail would be a big conversation and we would. We would like to have it within a process where we're really focused, where we're really keeping in mind what we're focused on, we're focused on safe multimodal access, there could be other things associated with this. Um, and we also knew that, yeah, as Dan was alluding to, if we have solutions that were going to come. That were going to be counter to a a planning process previously. I think there's a balance between being nimble and adjusting our planning process and also. Providing the community some transparency and doing the outreach to let them know that it's also happening, so I'm really trying to balance that. Hey, there's this transparency, we previously had a community, you know, process around this, we think it's time we want, we may want to revisit. An aspect of this, but we want to be transparent and fair and allow people the opportunity to participate, and we felt like coupling that with this. Provided that balance of trying to be nimble, expedited and bringing process and transparency, so I can say that's why why we coupled them.
Yeah, and in addition to coupling out, speak a little bit to the timeline. Uh, one of our staff's uh internal conversations were between how many engagement windows we wanted to have. And uh we landed pretty unanimously that the three engagement windows was the appropriate number, especially. Uh, with the presumption that we may be looking at solutions that were. That go counter to existing current policy guidance. Uh, we were debating pretty heavily between can we get away, get away, that's a terrible word. Can can this planning process be uh thorough enough with just two windows of engagement? And we landed pretty thoroughly after a lot of discussions that we feel three is is the appropriate number. One of it is, is that we, if we do land on the on the council table, we want to be able to answer thoroughly the questions we know we're going to get is. And usually, community engagement is something is, tell us what the community said, how did you do it, did you, did you hear from all the voices and? And we felt like to do that right, we needed to go beyond just the two engagement windows and add that third. So uh that did add uh uh two months to the process. But that was something that staff felt was important to the integrity of the uh process. And ultimately, if we are going to suggest any changes, that we would have all the information at hand that uh. That we would, that we would need, the board would need, council would need, the community would need to justify something like that.
So what I'm hearing, has any of your? Thoughts about the process change given what's happened uh happened tonight and what you've heard tonight? Are you, or can, do you see a a potential to decouple them, do you see any potential to? Do a first engagement window in Q one? For example?
I I think, yeah.
Intercept survey timing is the key.
Yeah, intercept survey timing was was a big part of that, um not doing that in um. January, February, or you know, early on, but in terms of. Decoupling, I would say that in order to assess just one potential solution, you would go through this process. And then you would have to go through this process again, and so it would really be delaying. The rest of seven C for a year and just doing this process focused on one potential solution, because I think. I I'm not sure that would be that much expedited, in my opinion, based on the conversations that I've had with bike biking in this community over, well, since. The West TSA, since when I first started.
Really, that's. I drained your battery too, Brady, because it's not, yeah, but thanks. Yeah, I guess uh I. Would implore the department to please consider ways to move this along, I know one year does seem fast for a behemoth department like this. Um, but again, it's not something new that we've, we've, we've been talking about this since two thousand and five. Um, and uh, you know. I I've heard the staff say multiple times that we could do things that were low-hanging fruit because. You know, we own the land already, we already manage the land, there's already a trail that exists. Um, it just, it just seems like there could be some flexibility. And it feels a bit disingenuous because um I had been hearing that you would consider. Um, ta- taking on low-hanging fruit like something that um we're talking about today and and moving that along.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is I think when I consider low-hanging fruit, um. I consider low-hanging fruit something that we can maybe do without community or council. Um, input, I think, I think when.
I don't think I was considering that, I we, I always want wanted there to be community engagement. And we, and all these conversations have had community engagement and council engagement i- in the conversation. I'm I'm not at all suggesting that we bypass that.
Okay, I guess for my minute, when I, I guess it's just a terminology, sometimes when I think of low-hanging fruit, I think of something that, you know, staff can do on our own. Without engagement, you know, it's just something that we can implement on our own, so I think that was the terminology thing that I was just trying to clarify there, it just, just terminology difference there.
Good, Brady.
Ki- Casey, I just wanted to ask for clarification, so di- did I hear you correctly when you were saying? To expedite the connector trail and to do that right in terms of engagement? From Mural's view, it would necessarily delay the rest of seven C and you, in your view, you'd have to do. A mini-process expedited for this one trail. And then more or less start over, over the rest of seven C, did I hear that correctly?
I, that that would be my, my guess, I, if I, if I were to talk right now, I would do this, I would do a very similar process for. The one connector trail and then I would redo this. You know, again afterwards, I mean, it's a capacity issue, just knowing the community interest around this, I think that uh it would. Yeah, that's how, that's my best guess on how I would approach it tonight in my, in my couple-minute brainstorm.
Yeah.
Yeah, the redo for the rest of the system. If it was in plan guidance, you might get away with just the one or two engagement windows as opposed to the third, but that's probably the only difference.
I'm sorry, you, to to did, the engagement for the trail would just be one or two?
No, this would probably be what it would look like if it, even if it was just the trail project, if we then needed to do the rest of the system. And do the same analysis for the rest of the system, assuming that the solutions that rose up in that system-wide analysis, taking away just the. One connector, saying that was done, we planned for that, now it's twenty twenty-seven. That rest of, the rest of the seven C project would look similar to this, and I was saying the only exception could be is. If the rest of the solutions were within plan guidance, we might not need that that third engagement.
Because it presumably wouldn't be as controversial.
Right, it could, it could be maybe a nine-month process instead of a twelve-month.
And indeed, this is the most speakers I've ever seen at a, among the most speakers I've seen in the last three years at a council, at a, at an O S B T meeting.
Yeah, and I would also say, and just to be totally transparent, I've gotten phone calls and messages in the past two months from. I know the bike community has been on this and and we've been getting suggestions for this trail from the bike community for a few years, but. There's been community members that have called me personally saying. I'm just hearing this for the first time, what is, what what is, what is this even? And so I think, even though I think this group here is well aware of what's going on. I think that there's still a more community awareness to be done. To be, to hear from all the voices, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay. Any more thoughts on this agenda item? Okay, well, thank you very much, and and what I'd like to do is now let's just take a uh five-minute break where we've been at it for two and a half hours, so. If we can do five minutes and then come back with uh the next agenda item, that'd be great.
All right, great, um, our next item from matters from the department is an update on O S M P's uh. Climate Action Plan, and we have a special guest to kind of kick things started, but I'll first turn it over to uh. Um, our esteemed um Brian Annaker to get us started.
Just getting my camera turned on. She don't know what to do. There it is. Okay. Is the sharing looking okay?
Not yet.
Okay.
Your presentation.
Okay.
Is it on your screen?
It is now.
Okay, there we go.
Right? Okay, we got it. On the video as well?
Yes, we are.
Oh, okay.
Hello. Uh, good evening trustees, thank you, Dan, um, good to be back with you tonight. Here we go. Uh, brief overview of what we're going to cover tonight, we're going to start with Jonathan to give us some framing remarks from the Climate Initiatives. Department, an overview of their work and how it relates to O S M P. Then Alicia and I are going to take turns giving you a really brief reminder of what's inside the O S M P climate plan. And describing a couple of our accomplishments and then we'll wrap up with Q and A. With that. And then tilt this to Charles up there.
That works. Okay, well, that's a weird angle. Yeah, no, no, it's totally fine.
Yeah, no, no, it's totally fine. Thanks, Brian and Dan. Good evening, Chair, Board Member. My name is Jonathan Coe and I'm honored to serve as the Director of the Climate Initiatives Department here at the City of Boulder. Dan and Brian have wisely given me 10 minutes to present. So I'm going to keep my remarks at a pretty high altitude. But obviously I'll stick around for any questions on this topic. I can't necessarily get out anyway, so it's all right. I appreciate the opportunity to chat. So first, I really want to start by acknowledging the exceptional work of OSMP and the staff. I have really been, I think, amazed and really delighted at the level of expertise, the creativity and the commitment within the department. And I think it really shows in the quality of the plan that you're looking at tonight. So I want to give you a little bit of an orientation to my department, if you're not familiar. And then, as Brian said, just how it kind of crosswalks into the plan that you're looking at. So broadly speaking, the role of my department is to provide this overarching direction, some scientific grounding, and what I like to call cross departmental cohesion into the community's climate work. So functionally, we're organized in some work streams. You can see those on the screen up in front of you. Largely speaking, a lot of our effort, resources go into our energy systems bucket. But we also have a team working on circular economy. And our newest work area, which is also, I think, some of the most exciting groundbreaking work is in our nature based solutions. And there's a lot of connection between the departments in that space. But I also want to recognize that we try to wrap all of our work around design principles, around equity, climate justice, to make sure that we're really leading with that value. That's been something, obviously, that's been front and center for the city and it's something that's equally important for us as a department. You also see a box here around community wildfire resilience. You just had a conversation about this. This is something, obviously, every department is contributing to. For my department, it comes in a number of forms. Our climate tax actually provides $1.5 million annually into that work. But we oversee a lot of the partnership or all of the partnership work with Excel Energy. So that looks like work in hardening their system, undergrounding power lines, vegetation management, re-closer systems, looking at identifying critical facilities. So there's a lot in that space that our department oversees and connects in in terms of the wildfire space. If you can go to the next slide. So I don't know how familiar you are with the climate plan or the climate action plan. So I'll take you on a really short climate journey. Starting back on the left side of the screen, the city adopted the Kiro Resolution in 2002. And that's really when our work began in earnest in this space. Our first climate action plan was adopted in 2005. And if you're wondering, yes, I was here working on this in 2005. And it continues to be one of the most comprehensive local climate frameworks in the country. Along the way, as you can see these points in time, we've refined the plan with community and council to match the speed and scale of what's necessary. We were just in front of City Council November 6th for the most recent update to the climate plan. And I just wanted to share with you, some of the refinements in that update were really looking at adopting some new overarching resilience and equity goals. We really treated that as qualitative and now we have some quantitative ideas, expanding the focus on managing local climate impacts and risk data. And you'll likely hear more about that, but I'll touch on it in just a moment. And then we, we've established this idea of a whole of government framework, which really looks at how every department is playing, playing a specific and an intentional role in our climate work. We also included compact transit authority and land use as a guiding principle. That is both in terms of what we have had from direction from City Council and really thinking about what the best science is telling us. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So I wanted to share a little bit of some, some of our learnings. We have been at this a long time. So when we think about how we have evolved our work in the space, what we know is that climate change is happening faster than we thought. And we need to really double our efforts, triple our efforts to make sure that we're addressing the speed and scale, that term that I already used. The other thing that we learned pretty directly is that cities won't be able to achieve climate neutrality alone. And just the actions of some cities is not going to be enough. And so a lot of our work is oriented towards building coalitions, working outside our boundaries. And that really looks like policy work at the state level and sometimes federal and even international levels. And also a really important recognition that it's not just about mitigation. It's not just about metric tons of carbon. We have to recognize that the impacts of climate change are here, we're, we see them when we walk out this door. We see them when we look out our windows. So really thinking about how resilience and adaptation become core principles in the work that we do. Go ahead and go to the next slide if you don't mind. So you, you don't need to spend a lot of time on this one, but I wanted to share a little bit of the hierarchy and how the work that Open Space is doing and the climate plan that's before you connects in to the overall structure. So the hierarchy, this upside down triangle, really looks at the different layers of how our plan fits in with other planning efforts across the city. So obviously, it, it is, sets kind of the shared climate direction and a common set of goals for departments. It doesn't replace or duplicate any existing departmental plans. In fact, it actually works in tandem with those plans. And so you can see as you drop down in this, in the layers, we've identified action areas, those are pretty established. We know where the work needs to happen within our climate plan. The big moves, which I'll show you on the next screen, are really the transform, transformational actions that we need to be taking as a city and as a community. And then that little tip on the bottom, the implementation, that's where programs and plans like the OSMP plan really fit in. They're actionable and they really align with and roll up into the city's plan. Go to the next slide. You don't need to read all this, there's a lot of text on this slide. But I wanted to give you an example of the big moves that, this is just one screen of probably 20 that I could share with you. But the intention here is to be very, very specific about what we are trying to accomplish. What are the KPIs that we're tracking? How do we show that we're making meaningful and measurable progress? But we also have to recognize that our progress is really measured in terms of impact. How is our work making lives better? And that's really something that we lead with at this point. What are the values based metrics that are really important for climate work? Metric tons of carbon are important, but more important to our work is health, safety, economic productivity, happiness. So how do we figure out what that impact is and how does our plan really align with that outcome? And go to the next slide. So I mentioned this idea of, I'm, I just have one or two more slides, this concept of whole of government. And this is something that we have come up with, really in the recognition that how far we've come, not just in terms of the work, but how we do that work. So since that first climate action plan in 2006, much of the effort was really centered in one program, one department, that was mine. And we served as the department that was developing strategies, managing the programs and really leading the community conversation. And so I've referenced a few times now, this whole of government approach really recognizes how critical it is to have every department really playing their respective role in achieving the overarching objectives of the climate plan. And go to the, actually hover there for just a second if you don't mind. Yeah, so I wanted to just mention on this slide, earlier this year, we did a mapping exercise across the city organization to really look at where the emerging concepts that are touching climate exist. So for example, you can see on this screen, it's a little bit small, but you're looking at visuals of the transportation master plan, the water efficiency plan, the city's resilience strategy. Over on the right, obviously, OSMP's climate objectives. And so rather than trying to pull those into an overarching plan, we crosswalk and we really recognize that's where that work lives. And as we move forward in updating those plans, really keeping front of mind how it's really going to serve the overall climate objectives is really important. And that's what this next slide is, again, very small, but this is just a screenshot of some of the crosswalking that we did. You can see little icons there and essentially it allows us to take a look at the various plans and in what fashion do they serve the overall objectives that we have in the climate plan? So next slide. So I wanted to just leave you with a couple of things here. The, the, the work that we do across our departments obviously runs pretty deep. I would say that we are consistently figuring out how to complement and work together. As I look forward to 2026, I just want to give you some examples of some things that we know are going to be moving forward. Some of those, you just talked about the citywide strategic plan, some of them live there. Some of them live with some of the very near term time sensitive issues. So kind of moving left to right, we've been doing a huge amount of work over the past year in getting, getting some evidence based modeling around a heat management strategy. This is one of the items that we do have before us in the strategic plan. And then developing a heat vulnerability index. And so if you were tracking in the last couple of years, my department has done some really interesting heat mapping during times of extreme heat during the day, where people would wear monitors, both in terms of on their person and then they drove around just to really understand where heat exists and what that looks like in terms of vulnerabilities. So bringing that forward in the next year or so, really how that shapes up a lot of our vulnerability indices and the work that we do as a city organization is going to be really critical. Also, if you just move to the top right, it's a picture of one of our techs doing mosquito control. My office, office also oversees the integrated pest management program. And we're in year three of a pretty deep evaluation of what's continuing to work. What do we need to let go of and what do we need to evolve in terms of managing our overall efforts to use ecological practices and addressing weeds and pests? And then Cool Boulder, you may have heard of that program. That's a city sponsored initiative to create nature based climate action in collaboration with community members and organizations, about 60 organizations right now. And then I mentioned the last one down in the right hand corner. There's a lot that is going to be coming forward in this next year or two around Excel's wildfire mitigation plan. That does touch open space in many ways as they look to harden their system, underground some of their lines and identify critical facilities. I know I'm, I'm running a little bit long, but I wanted to share one personal comment with you all. And I shared this with council during the update to our climate plan. And it's this idea that we've been hearing this real concern that the momentum around climate is evaporated. And what I mean by that is that some feel that we've gone into hiding in some regard, mostly as a direct result of what we're seeing at the federal level. I mean, we are seeing words like climate at equity being scrubbed from federal websites. We're seeing the mood nationally kind of move from what was optimism now to caution and sometimes looking more like despair. But I just want to tell you as a department and as an organization, we have seen our work as really inseparable from the work of housing, water, workforce, community health. And so our pitch hasn't changed because we have always been focused on everyday needs in this community. So if anybody's watching, our climate work isn't paused, not even close. We'll continue to focus on results that matter. And I'm really eager to see how we can integrate and support the great work of Open Space in this process. Thanks.
Fantastic. And thank you again for taking the time to come tonight and speak in person. That's fantastic. And also, yeah, looking forward to collaboration in 2026, further partnership. So on this next slide, we wanted just a two slide brief reminder about our climate plan. So now we've, really important, seeing that bigger picture with Jonathan's slides and what's happening community wide and then zooming back into our open space system and, and what we help steward here in the city. And so our great work as a quick reminder started, I mean, in, since we've been working, right? We, we've done an analysis for 40 to 60% of the work that we do in our department is already directly related to climate action. And so it's, it's kind of hard to say, oh yeah, this started in 2024, but that's what you see in the, in the banner there. So officially, we did the planning and analysis and development of our official climate plan in 2024. And 2025, so this, this past year was us officially implementing it, our first year of implementation. So very exciting. And I think this is now my third or fourth time presenting in front of you all. So thank you again for the opportunity on this kind of annual basis of giving you an update. And a reminder, after many, many engagements internally, as well as, as I mentioned, a lot of analysis, we landed with these three objectives, increasing resiliency, reducing our footprint and fostering engagement as a generalization. And then out of hundreds, including working with consultants, out of hundreds of potential actions, things that we already do, recommendations, best practices, pies in the sky, you know, dream as big as you can. And we did a ton of narrowing it down, prioritizing and ranking mainly based off of feasibility and impact. And we landed with these 19 for us to focus on, right? We really had to be like, wow, we can't do it all. But how about for the next five years of implementation through 2030? What can the department, again, we're so lucky to have that support for not only staff's passion and work to continue, but also budget resources and partnerships to help reduce barriers and increase and improve the work that we're already doing. So these 19 things you can see from left to right, a lot of it falls under the resiliency blue column. We've got quite a bit under the emissions. And as our great staff have already, Casey and Jenna have already spoken to, you can see reduced emissions from visitor travel, that was at 2.2. So there, a lot of the parent, as we call them children projects underneath these 19 solutions. I think we ended up with what, 150 projects that key into these solutions? A lot of those, a few of them have started this year, a lot of them have been ongoing. And then we even have a few starting in 2026, as you saw with the reduced emissions from visitor travel presentation. With that, I think it's now you, Brian.
Great. You may remember, last year, we talked about our carbon footprint. First thing to know is if you have a big savings account of carbon above and below ground, millions and millions of metric tons of carbon stored. But what's more interesting is this annual transaction that we get to play with. In the middle, that big green arrow is that carbon drawdown on a given year. Open space plants take down over 12,000 metric tons. If it's a real dry droughty year, that can be reduced all the way down to 2,000 metric tons. And then the orange arrows represent carbon emissions. So from left to right, we're looking at wildfire, we had 100 acre wildfire, that's around 4,000 metric tons. Every year, we're doing forest thinning for the benefit of ecological health and risk reduction. That waste wood is over 4,000 metric tons when it's burned. Our cattle grazing operations, 3,000 metric tons. Wind erosion from prairie dog colonies, 100 acres is 30 metric tons. Our operations, mostly our fleet and our buildings, over 3,000 metric tons. And then the big arrow to the right, we've alluded to this a number of times tonight, is travel of our visitors to and from to get to our access points. That's over 15,000 metric tons. That arrow, while it's the biggest, is the one we have the least amount of control over. That said, we're very interested in knowing that number and doing what we can to influence it and potentially reduce it. We're also aware that this is one game we can play and it's hard to really think about an equation that adequately describes the way forward. So we really simplified it in our minds by saying every ton matters, which means we want to do what we can to increase the size of the green arrow, where we can do that responsibly and also reduce the size of those orange arrows, where we can afford to do that while still meeting the core mission of our department.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. And now moving on to just highlighting some accomplishments. Obviously, we can't go through it all of what happened in 2025. But a key one, as you can see in the left hand side, I won't read through that. But beyond just implementing all of those kind of project management key pieces, one that we're happy to say is now going to be external facing and digestible for the community is the way that we can communicate our resilience and our climate plan story for our department specifically. And so, you know, with infographics, images, key performance indicators, and more importantly, if you want to hit next advance, is the story map. And so this will be accessible for the community to discover and explore how OSMP is tracking emissions, storing our carbon, managing our wildfire resilience and planning for a climate resilient future with specific projects mentioned, as well as I'm interactive maps and other visuals and resources, a lot of connections to the citywide action and great work that's happening too. Next slide.
Another big accomplishment in 2025 was to start our implementation planning for a completely different plan, this Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So as you may recall, in 2024, we had a major update to this plan. And we used the climate plan as a real jump, place to jump off of, meaning we took the objective and key result framework, which is to say, take a really wicked problem, boil it down into. framework, which is to say, take a really wicked problem, boil it down into a short list of objectives. Climate plan has three of those. Under those, list out a short list of key results. If accomplished, you'll make headway on that objective. So that's how the climate plan was structured. We took that same DNA and baked it in to the wildfire resilience implementation plan, which we're showing here on the right, three different objectives, each underpinned with one or more of what they're, what we're calling action areas in that place, which gives us a nice scale to talk to the community about, to let our executive teams do prioritization for and to really track our progress. The other key integration with wildfire was to recognize that the climate plan, if you can see those tiny fire icons, represent a whole lot of crosswalk between these two efforts, places where if we do the work to accomplish our climate objectives, we'll get these co-benefits for wildfire resilience. So mapping that crosswalk was a really key integration for this year.
Great. And if you might remember, this time last year, I believe a couple of you trustees mentioned you really should be sharing your lessons learned and some of this key knowledge and formulas and suggestions and best management practices that are developing out of consultant work. And so this year, one of the key accomplishments as a program overall was we have enjoyed the opportunity to share those lessons learned and tips at a couple of opportunities, including presentations. The most recent one was the annual COSA event, Colorado Open Space Alliance, where about 40, some of the pictures here, you can click on the next piece. You can see about over 40 different folks from across Colorado, so peer agencies, staff were there to learn about making a climate action plan for their agency from a natural resource perspective. And we really focused in on like actionable tips and steps for them. They had worksheets to work through. It was a playbook and a game plan. It was really exciting and it was a great turnout.
Another program accomplishment was putting our open space climate action CIP to work. You can see here over the last three years, we've invested close to $400,000 to make these solutions come to life. We've broken down that investment across the three objectives. Main thing to notice here is we're investing across all three, but not quite equally. And that just reflects the high price tag of going electric, electrifying our fleet, getting EV chargers, changing our buildings from gas powered to electric powered, sealing our building envelopes. All those things come with major price tags and the climate CIP really is only paying a small fraction of those price tags that are already getting covered through our facilities and fleet budgets, but we're happy to be able to put some money towards that. Another way to look at resource investment is our work plan. Where on the right there, we just pulled a query to show that that first climate plan objective, which is really about land resilience and restoration work, we have a whole lot of projects connected into there. So even if there aren't a lot of capital dollars per se, a lot of different staff working on those projects and really thinking, how can we adjust these projects to make them as green as possible and get them ready for the shocks and stresses coming for us?
Wonderful. With just a few more slides, we're going to zoom in even further and focus on some project accomplishments in 2025. So this one's related a little bit to work that was started in 2025. And a key solution was greening our operational infrastructure. And we had mentioned again in 2025 or starting last year, electrification of some of our campuses, including specifically the Cherryville area, upgrading the services to support more mechanical equipment, charging stations for electrical vehicles, replacing aging gas appliances with more efficiency pumps, doing sustainable prescriptive sheep grazing, very specific to protect our solar arrays and that investment. And for 2026, or sorry, for this year alone, 2025 alone, we also then went on to three other buildings where their envelope, as we call them, were improved. And that was a huge effort and a lot of support went towards that. And that means like insulation, energy efficiency, all of that was sealed up and made as efficient as possible. And so that really helps with our footprint when it comes down to things in the long run.
And the last project example also comes from Jeff's visitor experience in infrastructure service area. And I think you've heard this before from Eileen and Nick Duvanel. It has to do with the cottonwood trailhead and that recent redesign really represents climate ready and what a climate ready trailhead can look like. And now it does look like, thanks to their great work, looking at making sense of some consultant findings around the different surfacing materials, ended up with this hybrid solution where using concrete for a curb and gutter system that keeps the water from running off and keeps the aggregate in the parking lot. You can see there's curb cuts there that direct that off water flow into rain gardens, which are planted with a diversity of native plants and also climate and drought adapted species. There's bike racks there, there's waste receptacles, recycling and dog waste compost facilities. So a really great example of just some greener thinking and how you can take a project that's already on the books that needs a solution to fix the ponding of water each season and the constant maintenance from grading and do some things differently to be a little more green and use this as a way to galvanize our partners to think creatively as well and follow our lead on this, with this project.
And with that, we just wanted to highlight a few next steps. A key one that we'll be sharing out with you all is after we've done, finished synthesizing, we'll be sharing out the KPIs, the key performance indicators for the climate plan from 2025. So looking forward to that. We're going to continue our successful project manager check-ins. As you can imagine, with over 100 and, well, yeah, just over 100 projects, we end up with anywhere between 10 to 15 different staff that are the key, that are the key project managers for a lot of this work that's going on. And so checking in with them at least twice a year and more so if needed to see how we can support them, what work we can do, what side projects and barriers need to be addressed is really important. And so that's worked really well so far. In fact, the demand for our help is more than we can offer, but we're doing what we can and it's been a really great partnership just within the department and across work groups, including, we're looking forward to focusing a lot on the multimodal improvements assessment for 2026. And then of course, we'll continue with our work planning and out year planning through the 2030 to make sure that we can continue to hit our KPIs, including successful budgeting with the, again, very fortunate and grateful additional resources that we've been given for the next few years.
Okay, we know it's late. We have a couple prompting questions, but we'll have enough for Q and A and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. Does feel late, but I got a second wind. Joking, I don't. Just a couple of questions. Thanks a lot for the presentation and Jonathan, thanks for coming and joining us tonight. I am curious about that last slide that you just had, Alicia, when you said you're looking for, it was a bullet point under the check-ins. But what does that look like when you're talking about you're looking forward to multimodal improvement assessments?
Sure. So the Casey and Jenna's charter includes an internal core group of staff, subject matter experts. And we have as a group, as the climate and science work group have been tagged to be a part of that core team. And so there's the strategic times that we're going to be meeting and developing and assessing and kind of filtering, if you will, and giving input when appropriate along that way, along that chart that you saw, the whole schedule through the year.
Like, will you be helping them set up some KPIs for, I guess, after things are implemented? Then it's things that you could measure afterward?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, KPIs for them specifically, yeah, when it comes to the overlap with climate, right? Like reducing emissions, yeah, that's one of the ways that we can absolutely support them. And we'll discuss that and see where the best ways to kind of frame that up and get that out.
And I guess I've seen that number a couple of times, Brian, but that 15,275 metric tons of emissions that is produced from visitor travel, I guess it's, I know it's a big number. I know it's, and I think you made the comment that it's the least, the one item that you feel like you have the least control over. And I totally get that. It's interesting because I've, I heard somebody say tonight and I saw an email saying, you really ought to question how much, you know, your effort for seven C is really going to impact that number. And I'm like, don't we have to try? Like, don't, I mean, don't we have to give it a shot? See if we can make a dent in that number? And I mean, I feel like it's just a bit hypocritical of the community to say that we are this, you know, we care about climate change and then not actually want to take action on it. That's why it's called the climate action plan, not just the climate plan. And then, yeah, and I'm just really interested in hearing about your heat map results because, and you said that will come out in like the next year or so. So I'd look forward to that. The last comment that I had was on your budget slide, that you have like 300 and something thousand dollars of tax, dedicated tax to work, or yeah, almost $400,000 of tax money to work with in the last two years. It seems such like an awfully small amount. And I know that's just the, what OSMP is getting. And that other side of the equation has just got to be a lot bigger because that's coming out of the operating budget of OSMP. Like our real effort is measured in bigger dollars.
Yeah, so this is actually internal open space funding that we're dedicating to encourage project managers to incorporate some greener solutions into their already existing projects. So we set aside about, I think about $150,000 a year in our CIP that we call our climate incentive fund. And so other project people will come to us internally and say, I would like to apply for some of that money in order to do something extra to my existing project to make it greener. So it's kind of an incentive for us internally. It's not a separate tax. It's part of our existing CIP that we dedicate 150,000. It's sort of a mini grant, internal granting project within ourselves to encourage project managers to think a little bit differently. And if they think differently, we could fund some of that difference making elements to their projects.
Gotcha. Sorry, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I like that program because you're providing incremental funding.
And Brian, do you remember off the top of your head, you did, you crunched some numbers and just based off of, as you mentioned, other budgets across the department, how much the department was actually investing towards climate work in general, right? 40 to 60% of our work is climate related. How much of our budget actually goes towards it? Do you remember off the top of your head? It's a lot.
I don't have the numbers in front of me. Yeah, I mean, if half of our work is climate work, then take our budget and divide it in half and that's our total investment.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
I got a question on the budget there, if I may.
Oh, go for it, Brady.
Yeah, so if half of our work is climate work and half of our budget is, is climate related, but how much of that is stuff we would have been doing anyway? And how much of it is stuff that we're doing explicitly just for climate?
Yeah, I think that's what you're seeing on this particular slide is the CIP, which is currently rated at 150K per year, is that above and beyond what we're already doing in our operations. That said, there are some adjustments we can make as project managers that don't actually come with a price tag per se. They're just shopping differently or making different decisions about how you run your equipment or idle times, things like that. So there's some practices that are, that are free. And I think Jonathan will also would chime in to say the climate tax fund, which is a city tax, creates an additional new fund of 1.5 million for wildfire resilience, as he alluded to earlier, which is divvied up across, you know, 10 different departments, but OSMP has a big piece of that that we bring in for additional wildfire resilience work, which gives us some of these climate co-benefits at the same time. So quite a bit of enhancements across these two interrelated topics beyond that 50% that was kind of already up and running.
Yeah. And Brady, I would say our goal is just to sort of operationalize the thinking here is that it starts off being sort of incentive based. Hey, here's a little more money to your project if you can think it a little differently. Hopefully, as the years go on, how we build a trailhead, how we maintain it, an office building and all that, it'll just be sort of matter.
It's just how we do business. It's just how we do it.
This is how we do business. And so tracking, you know, tracking that extra incentive may not even be a thing in a few years because we've operationalized everything to that thinking.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Jonathan. Brady, is it? I just wanted to.
Mr. Robinson, please.
Yeah, okay, appreciate that. I want, you raise an interesting question, and I think one of the things that we've recognized, particularly in this relationship that we've been creating between our nature based solutions team and OSMP, is that OSMP's stewardship of thousands of acres of ecologically significant land provides some of the most effective climate mitigation and resilience tools that we have. I would say that we don't necessarily label it as climate work, but we value it in that way. And so as we start to think about how we measure at the broader level, it's absolutely being captured in that way. And I think your question maybe prompts some conversation about how we actually can capture that value and the resource and how much investment is being made in that space. So I appreciate the question.
Yeah. Hey, Jonathan, I had one other question. This is very, very briefly, I know it's getting late. How much do you, are you feeling pressure, you or the department, on what's going on at a national scale? Are there any, I mean, I don't, I don't, I presume we don't have a whole lot of exposure on federal funding, but I actually don't know. And to what extent are you feeling like you're having to bob and weave a little bit to keep our collective heads under the firing line?
Yeah, thanks for the question. And it goes back to, I think, my concluding remarks about this idea of, around the concern and the momentum around climate somehow going into hiding. Yeah, I didn't speak to the fact that we are addressing this issue of the federal government clawing back specific funding related to climate inequity work. I would say it's marginally impacting our work broadly at the city scale. We have a number of federal grants that impacted us. I would say the policy is more impactful than the funding as you look at what the federal government has done in terms of characterizing pollutants. Obviously, those are things that impact all of the work in this space. And so, yeah, I think you use the term bob and weave. We're doing neither. We're redoubling our efforts. We're really squaring up to these headwinds. And I think it's really important that we continue to do that. There are a lot of communities that have gone into hiding in fear of reciprocity or some kind of impact from federal funding. That's not the direction that we've been given. That's not the position that we want to take.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Anything else, Mr. Robinson?
I'm done, man.
Okay. Okay, so I appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. And I thought it was cool how, you know, this methodology that you guys have in climate action to sort of let the priorities bubble up and winnow and winnow until you come up three major project areas, three major focus areas and the major pieces within each of those, narrow it down to 19. And then to see that that's an effective framework and that works for the fire resilience work too, that's cool. Just one specific question. Where are we with the biomass? I saw that was on one of the slides. Are we any further towards a plant, a location, a connection to the grid, a negotiation with Excel? Is it, has it progressed at all?
I can start. We did a joint project with older county, their Office of Sustainability, Climate Action and Resilience, countywide then with other partners. So now we have a really good understanding about our biomass stocks actually are on an annual basis, current conditions and where they're going, given the CWPP promises that have been made. So that's an inventory piece that we didn't have. And then they also inventoried all the vendors who can take woody material and did some really cool work, asked them how much they can take, what kind of material they'll take. Then they did the GIS exercise to say how far. Then they did the GIS exercise to say how far away are they? Then they did the transportation costs and all of that. The bottom line of that whole workup is there's a lot of small outfits that will take woody biomass, but nobody that can take it on the scale that we're producing it, with the exception of a couple of big players like BioChar Now, which we knew about from the beginning. And the concept of evolving towards a new compost facility was also a recommendation that came out of that report, which is not much I know more about, but if there's, if there's shared knowledge, let's hear it. The other thing I'll say is, so we're, we're looking at implementation planning for that. And the most recent update I got from the project manager at Oscar at Boulder County was he's coming up with flexible, scalable agreements where you put out an RFP basically, and vendors say, yeah, we'd be willing to take from this amount to that amount of this kind of material. And then if we have that sort of soft guarantee and a contract mechanism, then we can feel confident that if we truck it over there, we're not going to get turned away because that was a big fear that was surfaced. It's like, if you do the transportation, doesn't mean they're, they're going to take it because they get overwhelmed with material. So it's kind of a supply and demand thing and a very diffuse thing.
Yeah. And if I can just speak to that really quick, it sounds like that they're hoping to pick up speed again and continue to, to pull us in and our liaisons or our reps. It was either myself or Chris Warner, our forestry operations manager, as to be a part of that in, I think, Q1 or Q2, right? So first half of next year. But if anyone wants to read the final hefty report that came out of that, it is, the Oscar did create a webpage and they do have it linked there. I linked to it directly in the story map. So if you look up or type in biomass, find that on the story map, there should be a hyperlink to that webpage.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much. Anything else, Michelle? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, guys. Let's take a brief vote from the board to do the last two items, starting after nine o'clock.
My next item needs 90 seconds. It's the last item of the night.
It's not a 10-minute item.
No, it's a 90-second item.
All right. Well, I think we can vote yes.
All right. I, I just felt like it's imperative that I, as daylight, this emergent, sort of emergency project that's underway. And we'll be bringing it back to you in January. And it'll be in the form of likely having to amend an, an easement agreement with Excel Energy. They maintain two really critical feeder, electric feeder lines that run under open space from their Sunshine Canyon Drive hydroelectric, or their, their substation over to Canyon. And that open space is roughly just west of the People's Crossing, if you get a sense in the Centennial Trailhead. Well, the nature of replacing those feeder lines, which are causing outages, which, and some critical risk there, you, we need to keep, they need to keep those going while they put the new ones in. You can't just replace them. And then you have to have spacing between those ongoing live feeder lines and the new ones. You can't put them right next to together. So they're trying their best to work within their existing 20-foot easement line, but that ease, that 20 feet may have to shift one way or the other a little bit to accommodate the new feeder lines and then decommission the old ones. So if that's the case, we're prepared to bring back, bring to you an amendment to an existing easement. We'll have to run it through the 177 disposal because it's actually creating the new easement, even though it's just moving one slightly. So that's the preview of what's coming forward to you in an action item, very likely in January.
Okay. And, and so do you foresee, as, as one of the terms of the relocation of the easement, to be some remediation that Excel's going to have to do?
Oh, absolutely. We have thorough, you know, it's, they're underground lines, but of course, there'll be some surface disturbance. And well, we're really thorough in what that looks like for restoration. There's a cultural assessment going on to make sure there's no cultural impacts going on. There's a whole bunch of work happening right now to make sure that whatever new alignment it is very close to the existing alignment that we're prepared for, we're ready for, and that remediation will happen for sure.
Great. Any questions around that, Michelle? Brady? Okay. Director update?
Yeah, no, that, we're good.
Okay, then we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.